Welcome to our seventh meeting of fiscal year 2022. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, people may participate via Zoom. The ID and passcode are available on the planning board agendas, which are found on the planning board page on the Town of Milton website. Citizens may view on cable access, live streaming on their computer, or at a later date on the cable access website, they can view recordings there. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I would like to have a moment of silence for Marvin Gordon, who passed away the other night. So if we could all just take a moment. Thank you. I just thought I might say a couple of words about Marvin, and then I would open it up if anyone else on the planning board would like to say a word or two. As most of you know, Marvin has been an institution in Milton forever. Now I have learned for generations, his family has. And please do read the write-up in the Milton Times if you have the opportunity. I just thought it was fabulous.
It was in the Globe as well.
Oh, thank you, Kathleen. I look forward to reading that. He's been so active, you know, as a former select board member. And I'm not even going to try to mention all the committee committees and impacts that he's had in our town. But I've had the honor of serving on the Fuller Village Board with Marvin as president of the board. And he was kind enough to ask me to join, and who can say no to Marvin? So. And, you know, I like to think of Marvin when I walk the grounds of Pine Tree Brook and the Fuller Village. I like to, you know, think of his impact on the planning of those two extensive and very thoughtful projects, you know, being on the planning board. Those are the things that I love to walk out on. But I just really picture his impact and really appreciate those two projects and many others. But those two symbolize to me the way that he would incorporate respect for open space, trees, topography, and beautiful landscape into a beautiful design and a very thoughtful living space. I was not surprised to learn this week that he was somewhat of a gentleman's farmer. I can see that in those two, those two development projects. So if you ever get the opportunity to walk those two projects, please do. And please think of Marvin, his great plans, and these thoughtfully planned projects. So I just want to thank Marvin. Our thoughts and our hearts are with Andrea and her family through this difficult loss. And I would welcome other planning board members if they wanted to say a word.
My experience with Marvin was really different. I raced against him years ago sailing. He was an enthusiastic sailor and just an enthusiastic racer. He just had such a great time out there. It was always wonderful to see him, so.
Thank you, Kathleen. Meredith, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to say I completely agree. And I just, our thoughts to Andrea and the family right now. So you will be greatly missed in this town.
So you really will. He was a town meeting member all the way up, you know, he never stopped, so. And I saw him at a Fuller Village meeting about a week ago. And he was completely on the ball and his sense of humor and his, his thoughts and his plans and his goals were just incredible. As we were talking about solar power and variety of other very forward-thinking endeavors.
And I would just add that, you know, he was instrumental in finding a home for Temple Shalom. And having a home for the Jewish community in Milton, I think was a really important contribution that he made.
That's right. Thank you. I think that I'm really glad because we all brought a little something different to our remembrance. So that was great. Thank you. Okay, all right. So our next meeting date is October 28th. And I've just checked and the town hall, there's still a requirement that we wear masks in the town hall. So if we were to have a planning board meeting, each of us would have to wear a mask. The public would have to wear a mask. I imagine we may even have to seat everybody apart. And so I'm inclined to wait until there's a hybrid option or until, you know, I think it's the select board, the town administrator and the board of health who've determined, or some combination thereof, who have determined the mask mandate in the town hall. So, but I opened it up to discussion. I didn't know if anyone else had any other thoughts, but I thought we should at least plan the next couple of meetings so that Tim and Allison can, you know, do the proper postings.
Yeah, and the other thing, Denny, about the meetings is, I think Julie mentioned this at the last meeting. The second and fourth Thursday in November are Veterans Day and Thanksgiving. So we need to figure out an alternative unless, yeah, we're not, don't meet on Veterans Day and Thanksgiving, is my advice.
Okay. That's good advice, Tim.
Well, we're in a turkey coma anyway, so that's probably not a good idea.
Yes, and we don't want to do them on Friday. So how do Wednesdays look? Let's see, so let's see, 26, so.
The Wednesday before?
Yeah. Yeah, so how about Wednesday, the 10th, November 10th? And, oh, Wednesdays are hard right before Thanksgiving. Do we want to do Tuesday, the 23rd? So Wednesday, the 10th, and Tuesday, the 23rd?
It works.
Does that work?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I now have a commitment on Wednesdays. It's a standing commitment from 6:00 to 7:30. So if we could start at 7:30, I could do it. Or if we could move it to the Tuesday, the 9th, that would work for me.
Okay.
I could do that.
I could. Would you prefer, I could do either as well, Kathleen? Do you?
Yeah, I mean, why, it makes sense for the public too, to sort of have it on, like, we move it to Tuesdays. So you don't have to remember it's Wednesday one week and Thursday another week and Tuesday this one. So why don't we just say Tuesday, Tuesday?
Okay, Tuesday the 9th and Tuesday the 23rd.
Yep.
And I guess we should probably assume that we will have it virtually unless the mask mandate is lifted on town hall. How does that sound?
Well, I just had a board meeting in Boston yesterday. And we did, you know, everybody was wearing masks, stuff. I mean, I, you know, I don't have an objection to wearing a mask while we're doing it. People just took the mask off when they were actually speaking. I don't know, I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, I certainly like the convenience of not driving anymore, but.
Yeah, well, let me, I just have an interesting, I'm interested to hear from Tim.
Yeah, Denny, real quick, can we get Rich into the panelist? He's in the attendees, he's got his hand up.
Yeah, can the, can the cable access help me with that?
While you're doing that, Denny, I'm just going to point out that we have 28 or now 27 attendees. I think we had a comparable number at our last meeting. The Blue cannot accommodate that number of people with social distancing. So if we did entertain an idea to have an in-person meeting, I think we'd have to be looking at something like the Council on Aging, where we could get proper social distancing.
Okay.
Good point.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. So I think we're gonna, if every, if nobody objects, I think for the next three meetings, unless the mask mandate is lifted, we should just assume it would be virtual. How does that sound? Okay, okay, all right. So do we have Rich in our panel?
Yep, I am here.
Hi, hi, Rich. Okay. Hello, welcome. Oh, I should have had us all introduce ourselves. So Denny Swenson chair. Rich Beeler.
Rich Beeler secretary. Sorry, I'm in my car, I'm almost over.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, Meredith?
Meredith Hall member.
Cheryl?
Cheryl Taggias member.
And Kathleen.
Kathleen O'Donnell member.
Great, thank you so much. So, Rich, would you like to approve the minutes? Or were there any amendments? I didn't see any amendments. I read them in the shared folder.
I didn't make any.
Okay.
I didn't either.
Okay, great. Okay, so, Rich, I can read the dates where you are driving. So we're looking at 8:26. Yeah. Do you have the dates handy?
8:26, 9:09 and 9:22.
Yep.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah.
2001, yes, motion to accept the
Without amendment.
The approval of the minutes.
Okay. Okay, perfect. And all in favor, Cheryl Taggias?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Meredith Hall?
Yes.
Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Denny Swenson, yes. Okay, all right. Tim, would you be able to do your staff update?
Sure, sorry, I was eating dinner, so I turned my camera off. So. Glad to be here at a planning board meeting. I know I've been missing a bunch, which is a shame, but I've been staffing the 40B hearings, and that's a priority for this. But we were on a little bit of a break on those tonight, which is nice. If you're interested in an update on those, I think 582 Blue Hill Avenue, we had a hearing last night for the purpose of just sort of scheduling a final session of that public hearing on, not next Wednesday, but the following Wednesday, the 27th, with the intention to close that hearing and begin deliberations on a decision. So a decision on that one is imminent. That's important because with the Ice House and its 14 or 15 units on the subsized housing inventory, and then the 84 units that we will get upon approval of the Blue Hill Avenue project, we can apply to DHCD for the certification of our compliance with our housing production plan, which gets us two years of safe harbor from additional 40B projects. The ones that we've got active right now, including 16 Amber Road, 936 Presley Road, and 728 Randolph Ave, still still to be heard and decided. But if any, if any new ones come out of the woodwork in the next two years, we will have safe harbor from those and can reject those without recourse to housing field committee. So that's, that's great news. It's the first time we've ever managed to pull off that, which is, which is good. A couple other things, just to sort of keep on your, on your radar. We've been meeting with the Fire Station Building Committee and their associated professionals, their architects and engineers. You're probably, if anyone was probably not on the board, but were kind of in town and watching, the last kind of big public building project we did was the schools project more than 10 years ago now, probably 15 years ago now. These municipal projects operate in a kind of odd zoning kind of territory. So there's really not a place for kind of formal site plan review or permitting for the firehouses, for instance. So we've been trying to, you know, work with that committee and their professionals on a staff level, myself, the town engineer, TPW, fire chief, obviously, you know, kind of work through an evaluation of their site plan. They'd like to come into the planning board to present, you know, where they're at with the various stations. Atherton and the headquarters are pretty relatively far along in terms of their design. Obviously, the East Milton station is a little bit further back because we hadn't had a site until recently, but they are, you know, those drawings are progressing. I've seen them, they look, they look nice. So I have, I told them that I would get back to them on whatever we determined the planning board scheduled to be for November. They'd like to come in in November, so I'll give them those dates. And then, Denny, I'll get back to you in terms of sort of getting up on an agenda. You know, they'd obviously like to hear the planning board's input. There's no kind of formal approval, you know, for the planning board. But I think, you know, we're all in the same team here. And we want to make sure that these public building projects are, you know, are good. So they'll be coming in, so I'll keep you all updated on that. Another thing that I wanted to mention, just two more quick items. I mentioned this at the very beginning of this process and really haven't had many updates since. Back in, I actually don't even remember when it was, it was a couple of months ago. We got a grant in the amount of approximately $60,000 to get professional consulting services through DHCD's Local Rapid Recovery Planning Program, which was a kind of COVID-related planning program to give grant money municipalities to do planning for their business districts, to help those districts, you know, recover from COVID impacts, whether it's, you know, public realm-type interventions or kind of business technical assistance or facade improvements, or, you know, helping with marketing. You know, there's all sorts of different things that were kind of part of the, you know, the suite of options. So we've had, we've had a consultant working with us on that. We had a, you know, we had a public meeting. We had a number of kind of discussions with local stakeholders in East Milton. We just got the final plan yesterday. I haven't had a chance to put it up on the website. We'll be sort of hyping that up, you know, starting next week. At some point either, you know, we'll see where the schedule is. I don't want to put it off too long, but in the next couple of meetings, I'd like to take maybe just 15 minutes to go through that plan. It's, it's a really interesting plan. It's not kind of, you know, super, super nuts and bolts, but it does have a lot of really good ideas and a lot of really, you know, interesting opportunities for the planning board and other kind of town boards that are going to latch on to, to, you know, really give these business decisions a boost. It kind of plays off a lot of things we've already been talking about and also kind of lays the groundwork for some really interesting opportunities, especially for the new park up the deck, which I think everyone has very high hopes for. And we're really hoping to, you know, help that place be as dynamic a spot as it should be. So that'll be another thing coming up in the next couple of meetings to just kind of walk through that plan a little bit and kind of, you know, sink our teeth into it. The last thing that I'll say is, I wanted to kind of run this by the board. It doesn't have to be anything more official than kind of just agreeing to practice. Without naming names or shaming anyone, we still need to get some signatures on the Webber Farms decision. So let's try to get to town hall and do that. It's, it used to be really easy to do this. You'd sort of, you know, approve a project. And then the next meeting, we'd have a decision drawn up and we'd bring it to the Blue and everyone would sign it and easy peasy, we were ready to go. Now that we're not meeting, you know, together, it's kind of a situation where you either come to town hall or kind of we drive around town, bringing it to you. And it depends on what people are in, when people are out. You have the ability to authorize me to sign these documents on your behalf. So if you vote to approve something and then also vote to authorize the director to sign on your behalf, we just put that on the approval so that people can see, you know, that's why you've got my signature instead of your signatures. You know, we've done it in the past for sort of endorsements of A and R plans. You know, it's like a box on the A and R that says, you know, on behalf of planning board. It just strikes me as being much easier and kind of just much more efficient to get these things, you know, down to the clerk's office and gotten in a timely basis and really not holding up. You know, these approvals.
So, Tim, would you like us?
It's a crazy town.
Would you like us? I'm sorry, would you like us to vote on that now? Or just?
Yeah, I don't think you need to vote on it. I just, let's remember when you make a decision to also tack on vote to authorize me to sign.
Okay.
And then, you know, we'll be, we'll be good to go. So again, it doesn't have to be like a formal policy written down and where I just kind of remember to do it. I'll try to put a pin in it each time. And so that's all I've got for now. I actually had a post that I left in the office. I have other things on it, but they're obviously not important enough for me to remember. So there's your, your staff update.
Thank you so much. That's a good, good update. Thank you. I always like to do a little caveat that when, when Tim says, oh, it's a good news, that it would be good news when the next 40B passes. He doesn't mean that it's good news for a 40B. It just means the safe harbor is good news. If that's okay for me to clarify to him, because I sometimes get calls afterward and I just want people to understand that we feel these 40Bs are very, very dense. And, and it was something that we all sort of worked very hard, especially this one. I really wanted sustainability principles to take more of a precedent on this 582 one. So if you don't mind, Tim, my adding that addendum.
That's the expression of your opinion, not the expression of the board, so.
That's correct. Thank you. So at this time, I would like to open up to citizens speak. So any member of the public is welcome to speak about any matter on their minds. We encourage people to speak about an agenda item when it comes up. That way they can be part of that discussion and possibly back and forth. But you are welcome to speak about anything on your mind at this time. So if there is anyone here who would like to speak tonight during Citizen Speak, please raise your hand. I'm looking at the attendees. And I am not seeing any raised hands yet. So I'm guessing that some of the 29 people in the attendees will be speaking during an agenda topic tonight, so.
Denny, we have Ross Denny as a panelist for some reason, and she does have her hand raised.
Oh, okay, sorry, I didn't see her.
No, that's okay.
Hello.
I don't know, I don't know how I ended up here. So I keep trying to like leave and thinking that I could come back. I had my hand up earlier before just to ask, why is it offering me the panelist? But to make a long story short, I had a very helpful conversation with Tim this week. And he gave me a very good civics lesson. And then I applied my business knowledge to what is a stark concern I'm seeing across the town. I want to thank you all for volunteering. And I also want to thank the people who are volunteering on the Board of Appeals. And what I'm starting to see is that we have capacity issues. We have, whether it's significant requests that have to go in front of the Board of Appeals or significant requests for school committee members to join meetings or committees. And I would love to raise the issue of how do we increase the number of volunteers that are required to do the town's business so that we have the capacity that reflects the current need? I'm sure many of these committees were established years ago when the town's population was smaller. Things were not as complicated. But when we get to the agenda item about the Goddard School, what I realize is I think that people have very good intentions for what should happen, but we're running up against capacity issues. And it's no different for the school committee. And I don't know where these conversations begin, but I thought Citizen Speak is a good place to start. But in all seriousness, I do want us to take the opportunities of the town and have honest conversations about the amount of time commitment it takes to be part of the town and then have a realistic expectation for what it's going to take to get the work done in our, in our modern times. So thank you for your time. And if you can figure out how to make me an attendee again, that'd be great.
Okay, I'll ask the cable access to help us with that. Thank you so much. It's, I think it's a great point. And, and I, I constantly, when I'm having a engaged conversation with a citizen, I'm always asking, would you think about running for town meeting? Or would you think about, you know, whatever their interest is? I always beg them to run and beg them to volunteer and get involved. Because as Ms. Ross Denny was just saying, we are, we are up against it. You know, I, I used to work for a nonprofit, WGBH. I was on staff there for 14 years. And we used to tell people, don't have your volunteers be required to do anything for more than two or three hours. And I'm sure you sit on that school committee on a meeting night and you might be four, five hours in, and it's intense. We have our, our meetings run very, very long. And, and it's very, it's, it's a real, it's a real service that you do. And it's a real service, I think we all do and we all try. And I would love to share the service. So I very much appreciate your speaking on that. And I, let me know if you come up with any ideas and I will do the same. I don't know if anybody else on the board wanted to speak to that.
Well, I think it's right. I mean, you know, the, the, the number of committees that we all sit on, then you end up running into the same people again and again. Is, is really, you know, kind of sad, but I don't know. I mean, other than having, you know, some sort of volunteer fair where we force people to sign up or they got shamed somehow, you know, bringing out stocks again like they did in colonial times. I'm not really quite sure. But I think, I think all of us, as Denny said, you know, trying to speak to people who are interested and trying to get them engaged is probably one-on-one is probably our best option.
Well, I can get people to run. I think we need more people. So the school committee has six people. I honestly think it's work for eight people. And based on the Tim's, my civics lesson, the Board of Appeals needs more people. Like literally not just replacing the seats, but we actually need to have more people serving. And I do, I completely empathize with the conversation when people pull you aside and give you an airphone like, well, you know, you can run for town meeting. It's all of a sudden they're like changing the subject, but I, I respect it. It's a lot of, it's a lot of work and that's why no one wants to run. So if we're all in agreement that there's more work than the few of us volunteers, as a town, we have to say, we need to have more seats.
We need to have more seats and we may want to consider actually increasing our staff. You know, the, our, our planning staff that work so hard and they're so diligent and they work so hard for the planning department and for the select board and for the town administrator and every community issue that arises there. And then we have our building enforcement and inspectional services. I just feel like we could have so many more staff members and I don't know that the average citizen understands that, but that it's a, it's huge. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a mammoth amount of work that, that we call on them to do and they show up on weekends and weeknights and mornings and so on. They work through meals, lunches and dinners all the time and, and it's just a tough, it, yeah, we really do need all hands on deck.
I was going to mention this, the staff, the staffing as well, but I'd also like to mention just budget, like on the the master plan implementation committee, which is an appointed committee. We've been able to advocate the planning board support and the select board support for funding for outside consultants, which can add capacity, you know, into what can be done to augment the staff and to augment the committees and the boards. And even on a technical capacity that may not be present, you know, with everyone on these boards and committees. So I continue to advocate for that funding, like planning is so important. Because really for every planning dollar spent, we, we can reap so much benefit as a town. So if the planning department is completely occupied with applications, they don't have time to work on planning. And so the boards and committees and the consultants that we can hire, like the Metropolitan Area Planning Council on the planning end. I'm not so sure about all the resources on the school committee and other board end, but having that capacity to, to hire consultants to help us, I think has been an important way for us to, to move the master plan forward, for example. And to help with our planning initiatives like in East Milton Square and Milton Village. Additional funds, all the town meeting members that vote for the funds and the Marne Committee and others who work on these budgets, it's, it's important to to keep all of these things in mind. And I know how difficult it is. I was on the Marne Committee and I was the the chair of the school subcommittee for three years and I poured, poured over that school department budget for those three years. And I knew every penny that was, you know, needed for every teacher. And so I know the tug of pull of all these requests that come to my mind. And so I can appreciate everybody's work and advocating for the things that they're working on. So thank you.
Thank you. And actually, if Ms. Ross Denny can stay in our group, I think our next topic is going to be the Goddard School. So, so hang in there. And I didn't know if anybody else wanted to speak before I opened the next discussion. Okay, all right. Yes?
Hi.
Could you hear me okay? I just, just quickly, in the folder, Tim and I co-authored a, a board memo.
Oh, Allison, can, can I, I had a quick procedural thing before we get into the nitty gritty of this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just the, the way that the agenda is set up is the, the 193 Central item is, is first for the public hearings and 440 Granite Ave is second. I don't know if we could potentially just open the 193 hearing temporarily. Not, what would the term be? Pause it?
Yes. We want to open it for purposes, you know, sort of continuing because we want to change the agenda to sort of vote on the 440 Granite. Is that what you're saying?
Well, it's just there's the, the 440 Granite Project has requested a continuation and I think if Mary McCetrick is in the attendees, she might have had something that she wanted to chime in on, but that we can get a quick kind of continuation to the next meeting on that. So in case there's anyone in the crowd that is waiting for that, there's going to be no substantive discussion on 440 Granite Ave. So if we can just sort of open 193, continue it to two minutes from now. Open 440, continue it to two weeks from now and then reopen the other one.
Okay. Kathleen, do you want to make a motion to do that?
So I would make a motion to open the hearing on 193 Central Avenue.
Okay.
For five minutes? I can continue that hearing for five, you know, continue and reopen it five minutes later?
Okay.
Second.
All in favor? Mary?
I.
Okay, Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Meredith Hall?
Yes.
Cheryl Togays?
Yes.
Denny Swinson, yes. Okay, so, so here's a procedural question. Do we need to talk about this for five minutes or should we? Or can we close it immediately and, I mean, postpone it, continue it?
No, I think we're like, so now we're going to have a motion to open the hearing for 440 Granite Avenue.
Okay, please do so.
And make a motion to open the hearing on 440 Granite Avenue. Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, Cheryl Togays?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Meredith Hall?
Yes.
Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Denny Swinson, yes.
And?
Do we have Marion? Does Marion want to?
Yeah, can we promote Marion to panelist?
Is that, is that something that the cable access can do for us? Good evening, Marion.
You're on mute.
Just need to unmute Marion.
Okay, how's that?
That's great. We can hear you.
The unmute in three places. Anyway, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So if you'd like me to begin, we have sent a letter to the planning board, the applicants for 440 Granite Ave, and asked to have this hearing continued to your next available date, which I understand is October 28th. So we would like to ask the planning board to vote that continuance. I also want to mention tonight that I did just late this afternoon, send an update memo to the planning board about this project, which reviews some of the issues that we've been getting a lot of questions about. Provides some new information and just generally sort of puts it all together in one place. And I really, we are trying to reach out and talk to various people in the neighborhood and in the town. I, I request that if possible, for those who are very interested in this project, that you take the time to read that memo and I'm asking the planning board to put it on their website. Because I think information gets lost when a hearing has gone on this long. And I'm going to review this when we do meet again. I don't know, you know, I don't want to take three hours to do it. But we'd like to get something accomplished between now and the hearing date. And it would be very helpful if people would read this memo first. And then we could have a starting point for our discussion and we're always available. I am very easily accessed by email or my telephone number is in the phone book. If you want to speak to anyone and you haven't heard from anyone and you haven't had a chance to talk to the developer, we're here and we'd be delighted to meet with you and talk with you or to talk on the phone or on Zoom, whatever you prefer. So thank you.
Thank you.
So I, I did, I did receive that memo, Marion. I haven't had a chance. We'll put it up on the website in the morning. That's on the planning board page on towninmilton.org under development and zoning proposals and there'll be a link to 440 Granite Ave. All the documents, including all the comments that we've received are up on that page. So we'll get that up for tomorrow.
So I just want to clarify, so, so you're welcoming the neighbors or anyone who's interested in that project to talk with you and potentially talk with the developer about ideas or?
Oh, absolutely.
Potential win-win situations. I'm hoping, I would love to hear.
Whatever, you know, to make progress, we, we need more communication. The hearings are great, but as you know, from the last hearing, it takes a long time just to hear everybody's comments. We didn't really have a chance to respond. So that's one reason I wrote the memo. But I also think smaller, you know, smaller groups and personal interaction sometimes is very effective. So we'd be happy to do and meet in any form that's convenient for anyone else. And we're not going, you know, we don't have three months before the next hearing. But we would like to accomplish something, particularly next week. After that, the next following week is town meeting. So we're available and we would certainly encourage everybody to be in touch with us and to review the update memo.
That's, that's great. Thank you, Marion. And I would encourage the public to, to engage. I, I, I think community engagement would, would make a great difference here. So I'm very happy to hear that, Marion. Thank you. Okay, so would we like to?
So I make a motion to continue the hearing on 440 Granite Avenue to October 28th?
Yes.
Can we say it's?
Seven fifteen?
Seven. Seven ten, please.
Seven ten?
We've got another scenic road hearing at seven fifteen.
Oh, really? Okay.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Okay, second. All in favor, Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Meredith Hall?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Cheryl Togays?
Yes.
Denny Swinson, yes. Okay, so now we, we still have the Goddard open. Is that correct, everyone?
It's been, been six minutes, so you're in the clear.
Okay. All right, so that's, I think it would be great to hear a presentation. If, and then then we can hear from the public and the planning board. So who is presenting for the Goddard School application?
Well, I, I will be presenting. I do have a question. And that is whether we will be sharing screens or whether you are going to share screen if we need to show something from the site plan or anything like that.
Marion, if you've got, if you've got your materials and you can share your screen, that would be great. If you need us to do it, we've got the application. But I think you have control of that would be fine.
I, I think Sunny Verma is going to do that. And I'd also say that with me tonight are Sunny and Simi Verma, who are the owners, John Tilton, their engineer, Joe Walsh, their architect. And there are two representatives of the Goddard Schools who may be here tonight. One is Michael Smith and the other one is Mark Cameron. So if you see those names, they should also be panelists and you should allow share screen.
If all those folks could raise their hands so that Milton Access can, can see you and get you.
So we're just waiting for a few people to join the panel. So I think we've. Okay, okay, Marion, it's your show.
Do you need to do anything special for the screen sharing or is being a panelist enough to allow screen sharing? That would be Sunny Verma, who needs to be able to share a screen.
Okay, would you know, Tim?
I, I think Sunny should, should give it a shot and see if it works.
Okay.
This seems like it's on, but Marion, do you want me to share something right now or do you want to do your open and if there are questions, that's when I can share?
My intention was to ask you to open screen when we needed it, so I'd, I'd start out with an introduction first. You don't need to do anything if you think it's working, that's fine. So are we set to go?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'm Marion McCetrick and I'm representing the applicant for the 193 Central Ave application, which is an amendment to a site plan approval for the Goddard School. On July 28th, 2020, the Milton Planning Board approved the site plan for a new preschool and daycare facility at 193 Central Ave. This was to be located in the former Hoozick Club. And the applicants were Sunny and Simi Verma, as they are now. They had a purchase and sale agreement, which was going to be completed at the time they received their final building permit, which took place in about February 2021. And as everybody knows, just about a month after that, construction had, well, site preparation had barely begun. There was a catastrophic fire and the building burned to the ground. So everything stopped at that point. The site was, was restricted. There was investigation of the cause of the fire by insurance companies and by the fire department and the state Fire Marshal's Office. And so it was, the site was not released until towards the end of July. And the best I could tell neighbors during that period of time was that the Vermas did hope still to have a school at this site. They would have to build a new building. They would try to, you know, make it as similar as possible to the Goddard, to the original Hoozick building. And we really couldn't do anything further until we knew if the site was going to be released in a reasonable amount of time. As soon as it was, then the, the Verma's architect and engineer got to work on concept plans and ideas. I began, I met with the building commissioner to establish what the zoning requirements would be for a new building. Because those, those became the framework for what we would be able to do at the site. And a number of weeks ago, we had a concept for the building. We did meet with some neighbors. It wasn't a completed application or plan. And we talked about a number of issues of concern. Some of them we were able to address in the plans that we did file and the site plan, which is before you. It's, what I'm going to do tonight is, it's going to take a little bit of time, but I want to go through our site plan application item by item, because the way I've set this up was to try to explain to everybody what hasn't changed and what has changed as a result of having to locate a new building on the site. So I'm going to start out by saying that, as I believe we all know at this point, daycare preschool use is an allowed use in any zoning district. We discussed this last year when we filed our application. And I believe, you know, the neighbors understood that, we understood that. There's no question that doing this project in the Hoozick Club building was a very attractive proposal in the sense that we were trying to preserve an historic building. I thought it was a wonderful project. I think neighbors came around for the most part to supporting it. And the historical commission looked at our plans and approved them. And a lot of work, it took months of work to, to come up with a design that would work in the existing building. There was going to be, have to be further excavation in the basement because there would have to be space for classrooms created in the basement of the building. Because there would have to be space for classrooms created in the basement of the building. Unfortunately, and not according to plan for anyone, not for the owners and not for the neighbors, the fire occurred. And so we're back here with a new building design instead. I do want to assure everybody, though, this is not a larger program. It is, it is not a larger classroom space or administrative space. This, we have the same owners, we have the same building capacities, classroom capacity. We actually have one less classroom in this design than in the design last year. We reviewed the impact of traffic flow, trip generation and so forth. All of this was reviewed in our application last year. And that will not change. So there are a lot of aspects of this application that are not different. What is different, and I'm going to go through each. Item, point by point, but what's different here is the building orientation has to be. More parallel to Central Ave now, because we have to meet all the setback requirements in our zoning bylaw. The parking has to be in front of the building. Half of it was in front and half of it was in back in the old plan. Because we have to meet setback requirements for the parking. And be, and there, there are a lot of requirements for the parking now that, that we have to meet. And they include the fact that there has to be. Dense screening in between the parking and the street to shield the view of the parking. And we also have to have an entrance and an exit in this parking lot. Before, we had one parking area with a combined entrance and exit. But we also had the old circular driveway in front of the Hoozie Club, which could still be used for emergency access. But not for regular access. So, you know, what the Vermas have tried to do with their architect. Is to design a building that is as much similar to the Hoozie Club as they could. It, it's generally still rectangular in shape. It's mostly a first floor use. There are peaks on the sides of the building. There are windows in the front that are designed. In a similar fashion to the way some of the windows in the Hoozie Club were designed. And we're going to show you some pictures of that as I go through each of the features of this application. But that, that is what we have tried to do. But we have not in any way changed the program. Or the, and there, there should be no change in the impact of the program on the neighborhood or the site. I'm going to start out, I've already addressed the fact that this is, as a right use under Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-eight. Capacity of the building will remain the same as was proposed last year. Like, it's a, you know, up, up to possibly, the capacity is a hundred and sixty-five students. There will never be that many students at a time. Experience indicates, the Vermas have another school in Watertown that's a similar size. That generally the enrollment varies, could be between a hundred and a hundred and twenty students. It goes up higher. Sometimes it goes down lower. Other times. With a preschool and daycare program like this, the enrollment changes all the time. So even though the capacity is one number, it's, you're not going to see that number of students in the building at one, any one time. The number of classrooms last year was twelve. That's been reduced to eleven. The site is the same site, sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty square feet. This building footprint is a little bit larger than last year's. Last year, Hoozie Club had about eleven thousand, four hundred square feet. This building has twelve, approximately twelve thousand, five hundred. The difference is that, that they have included an indoor toddler play space in this building. Which they could not do in the Hoozie Club. And one reason that's significant is, of course, it's, it's a good feature of their program, but it's also. A way that more, very young children will be able to be indoors and exercising and, and doing large muscle activities. But don't have to be out in the playground. So it's one of the ways that playground density, I guess, is reduced in this new, new proposal. The, the. The new building is actually about a thousand square feet less. In terms of the gross square footage of classroom and administrative space. There's a different layout to the classrooms in the new building. They're all on the ground floor. There is no basement. In the Hoozie renovation, we were going to have to renovate parts of the basement to create enough classroom space. And the reason it's possible to do this with slightly less gross square footage. Is that the space can be designed for this use. In the old building, the, the school had to accommodate to the way the, the, the space was laid out, the existing space. They wanted to preserve the large meeting room. And it just wasn't as efficient. So although I, I think we've had reactions from neighbors saying, oh, this is much bigger. The program's bigger. It's overwhelming. It's not. It is not a larger program and it is not a larger building. The building orientation is now straight, parallel to Central Ave rather than at an angle. And as I said before, the design of the building does resemble the Hoozie Club. So. Sunny, is it possible for you to? Go to the exhibit? Let's see. Exhibit C. Can you show that or at least show us the rendering of the building from the front? The, the color rendering?
Is Sunny able to do that?
He's trying to.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if he.
And, and we'll go back to it if it, if it's taking some time because I, I want to get through the presentation. Why don't I keep talking? And the other thing, Sunny, is that you want to be ready to open the site plan. This is not part of the site plan. This is a. This is a rendering that's in the exhibits. Okay, so just let me continue. Oh, I think we've got it. The interesting thing about this rendering is you can hardly see the building. So I didn't want to show it to you. Oops, it's gone now. All right, I'm just going to continue. And then when we get the picture up, we'll, we'll talk about it. So, yeah. The exterior finishes in this building are similar to those in the Hoozie Club. They include shingles, some large ground, ground floor windows with design elements from the Hoozie Building. And the color palette in the building is going to be gray shingles with white trim. This, this, we, we did this drawing because we felt it was important to show some kind of rendering. Interestingly enough, we're designing so much screening in front of the building. That you can hardly see the building in this drawing. I did ask for this wide screen, which is a little bit distorted. Because I wanted to show the. Parking exit and the, the two parking entrances, exits. The, the entrance, as you face the building, is on the right. The exit is on the left. That's the, the exit is closer to Columbine Road. And later on, I will have probably John Tilton talk about the screening in front of the building. What you can see in this drawing is not much. There's also an exhibit D, I think, that, that shows the changes in the building, John. I mean, Sunny. So if you're able to find that exhibit, that would be helpful. But you can see here that there's a higher roof in the center. And then, then it's flat to the sides. And you can't see the windows that I'm talking about here. There is a nice front portico and there's stone around the portico. And then the building shingles also are not visible here. So. We'll, we'll go to another drawing to show the building design in more detail. And I'll continue talking until we can find that. I think that's exhibit C. Well, okay. So this is an architectural rendering of the building. This is an elevation. From the front. And this shows you that, that some of the window designs have the curved tops. That there's a, there's a higher center part to the building. This building is within the allowed height of thirty-five feet for this residential district. There are smaller windows in that part and then large windows all across the front of the building. Do you want to, if you, can you go to the next views, Sunny, and just show us the sides and the rear?
Marion, I'm looking for it. If you want to keep talking.
I'll just keep going. So when you do look at the building, you see that fence, edge of fencing along the roof edges. That's the shielding for the mechanicals on the roof. That was included in the prior proposal on the Hoozie Building. And it's been included here as well. So for parking. It's obviously been an issue because we had to move the parking to the front of the building. In last year's plan, there were fifteen spaces in the front of the building. That was going to be a newly designed parking area. And there were fifteen spaces accessed by driving to this, around the side of the building to the back of the building. The rear parking spaces were an issue because the concern was view of the parking and. You know, how much, how many trees were going to be taken down and so forth. So we, we did a lot of site design work with that rear area. There will be no rear parking in this building, so we won't need to deal with that additional screening in the back. On the other hand, in the front of the building now, we're going to be doing a lot of trees. And evergreen trees and other types of trees and bushes and plantings. Those are all described in some detail in the landscaping plans. They are designed to shield the view of the parking from the street and any parking lights or anything like that. This is, this is the landscaping sheet. And, you know, you can see the parking area. There are thirty-one parking spaces here. There were thirty parking spaces in the prior application. I know in the letter that the neighbors have sent, we've sent it back with some responses, but there was, the question in that letter was. If the Milton zoning bylaws only require, you know, two parking spaces for every three classrooms. Which totals about eight, seventeen or eighteen spaces. Why, why do you have to provide thirty or thirty-one? And the answer is that we, the, is that we intend to keep parked cars for this program off the street and on the site. There's two reasons for that. One is obviously it, it's less obtrusive for the neighbors and it doesn't interfere with traffic as much. But the other reason is that this is a preschool and day, excuse me, daycare program. Very young children will be exiting from cars with their parents to go to the door. And be dropped off in the morning and then to be picked up in the afternoon. And it is recommended very strongly that in such a program, the parking be on the site and away from the street. So there, there, for reasons of safety and also for, to protect the existing traffic flow on the street. And to protect neighbors from the view of parked cars for this program, we've provided this, this number of spaces. What's in the bylaw is a minimum. But we never even considered only providing that minimum last year. We designed the site last year with thirty parking spaces. And that was what the planning board approved. And that is the same capacity parking lot. Well, one more space was possible in this configuration. I also want to point out in this design, I don't know how clearly you can see it, but towards the top, at the top right-hand corner. On the left side of the parking area, there's a square. That's going to be the, the refuge storage area. We moved it from the other side because there were concerns it would be too close to neighbors on Columbine Road. This is, is not just a dumpster. It is an enclosed storage area with a refuse container inside the storage area. And so we, we have responded to some concerns and we've located it at the top in a different location than was originally planned. We also discussed at that meeting with the neighbors in August. We originally had a plan where the entrance. Trying to think now. The, I'm getting confused here. The, yeah, the exit to the parking lot. Was on the, on the lower edge. So. After dark, and this program ends at six P M. But after dark in the afternoon, cars was a lot, with lights would be exiting out. This lower edge of the parking lot. There was definitely a concern that those lights would be obtrusive to neighbors who are, whose houses are directly across the street. So we reversed the direction now. And we have the entrance to the parking lot on the lower area and the exit to the parking area on the upper area. And that's opposite this upper area, you do not have. You know, a front of a house directly across. And last year, in our original plan, both the entrance and the exit. Were in that upper area. So we've tried to keep. The degree of disturbance from car lights and so forth at a minimum by reversing the direction of, of this parking access. We have, I'm just trying to see. I mean, I, we can get into more discussion about the screening and what's there. If anyone wants to, we probably should move on so that I can cover. Other aspects of the design. And we'll just say, though, while we're looking at this landscaping design. We've kept every street tree that we committed to planting last year. And those were reviewed by the Street Tree Advisory Committee. The species were determined by them. We've kept the large oak tree on the bottom of this drawing. That is an existing oak tree and it will be further protected in these plans because it's, it's not. As close to, it's not by the playground area, as close to the playground area as before. We have added many more, much more vegetation and screening. That's all in the front of this drawing. We have left intact, as we promised to do last year. The wooded area in the top left-hand corner of the site. There is fencing around the site. Well, we can look at the regular site plan too, to review it. But it's exactly the way it was last year. It will, it, it is, it is a fence that looks like wood. It, it is vinyl. But it's a high-quality vinyl fence. We provided drawings in the exhibits to our application, same drawings we provided last year. And that fence will surround the site from one edge of the parking lot all the way around to the other edge. Just along. The, the lower part of this building where there's a walkway. Going back to the playground area in the rear, there is an additional stone wall that's going to be erected. And that is a requirement for this type of school because there's a street. Barely close by Columbine Road. And if anyone ever lost control of a vehicle. There has to be protection that will keep the vehicle from going onto the property and possibly hurting a child. So that is an additional feature because of the way this site is designed now. And the stone wall is inside the regular fencing. We have renderings of that and we'll talk about that a little bit later. But this, the principal features of this plan in terms of landscaping and the way the site is arranged. Is that there are still two playground areas to the rear, but they are smaller than they were last year. There are two small play areas on the, on this drawing. It's on the top. One of them is sort of an outdoor nature exploration area. And the other one is, is sort of marked for playing games. So they're both just flat outdoor areas. And the reason that they, that these playground areas have been made smaller like this and, and separated. Is basically to keep the population in each little play area. Thank you for enlarging it. To keep its, keep it restricted, not have as many children out in each one of them at, at any one time. Although these are very young children, they're very strictly supervised. So that they won't be noisy when they're playing outside. They just don't make that much noise. And I think if you go around and look at other, if you look at other preschools. I mean, there, it's not like the Tucker Playground at recess. That's all I can say. It's very.
Marion, the only reason I'm laughing is that, you know, I live across from Crane Field. And yet today, all the kids were out in the park. From the preschool around the corner.
Oh, all right. Well, well, I mean. That's true, but then they, well, I don't know how many were there at a time. I'm not trying to say that children don't ever make noise. What I'm saying is. That we have tried to design this site to minimize the intrusion from, i- if it bothers people to hear children out playing. And some people said that they thought it might bother them last year. We've kept that in mind in setting this design up. And we've tried to make these playground areas even smaller than they were last year. There has been a question asked about the grass area to the left of the playground areas. That's just an open, grassy area. That's just an open grassy area. I think in one drawing, it was described as tennis. It's possible that they could play lawn tennis on this and that's what that reference was to. However, we can't install anything in this area because there's a big drainage structure right underneath this grass. And so it's not possible to do anything more elaborate than, than just use it as an open play. There we are. So that, see, the, the grid shown in this plan is the drainage structure. This is the same drainage structure we had in last year's plan. And I think it may already be installed because the, the very first work that began on this site was in this rear area on the drainage. You can see, since we're looking at this plan of the drainage, that in front of the building, under the parking lot now, there are additional drainage structures. So any additional footprint from this building is accommodated by, and if there's any more pavement in the parking area, it, that is, the drain, stormwater drainage is controlled by these drainage structures. And if, and the, we've done a stormwater drainage analysis. There is no, there's no increase in flow off the site. There's one area in the front where it's very close and there's a discussion going on right now with the town engineer about including a little bit more pervious area right next to the building. Pervious area being pavement or something like that, that will allow drainage to go into it. So it, it's not regular pavement. So I'll see what else. Yeah, I mean, you know, even in a new building, you, you put in gutters and downspouts that can drain into the ground. None of these things were provided in the old building. And at this site previously, water tended to pond in that back area where, which is going to be grass and a drainage structure. So it will be a level back area when it's all completed. And the fencing that's installed along the back of the site will be installed at the level of the finished grade of that back grass area. And we've had questions about that even when construction began last year from the neighbors who live right to the side of that area. Okay, so that's just a quick look at the landscaping and at the way the drainage is arranged on this site. And the way parking is accessed to the parking lot. We have not added anything new to what we provided last year to analyze projected trip generation. What we did last year, and it's in the exhibits provided with this amendment application, is that we had the Goddard School, which has many schools around the country and a number in Massachusetts, look at similar-sized schools and to give us a table showing hour by hour the number of trips generated in and out of the site for a school of this size. So we have those tables and those tables then will become the basis for a comparison that can be made at least six months after the school is open to see, you know, what the actual trip generation is like. We expect that that will be quite accurate because it is based on experience with schools that are organized and run the same way this one is and which are similar size. In fact, several of them were a little bit larger than this one is. Okay, I talked about perimeter fencing. I talked about the new stone wall. I, if you could, Sunny, if you can try to show us the photometric plan, which is page ten or sheet ten in the site plan, and I want to see if we can enlarge that on the screen. We had a request and a letter from the neighbors that we show this in, in a way that, as you can see in its original printed form, it's tiny. So we really need to enlarge it quite a bit, just a little bit more even than that. Okay, good. So it, I know the pictures on the right hand of the screen block this a little bit, but if you look on the right-hand edge of this screen, between the edge of the screening, the, the vegetation and the street line, you'll see numbers and they all say zero point zero, zero point zero. This is a measure of light distribution from the lighting on the site onto that area. And that's what we look for. We're looking for no light distribution onto neighboring properties. This isn't even onto neighboring properties yet. It's just onto the street. But it shows you that the lighting, which is contained as P four, P four and P four, those are ten-foot lights with the style of lighting that's described in our exhibits. And that, those lights, which are required in order to properly light the parking lot after dark, do not shine back onto the street or into neighbors' homes. The numbers that you see, so you, you know, when you, we can only see part of this chart here, but if you look around the whole exterior, you'll see that there is no light being cast onto neighboring properties. The other feature in this, th- there's a chart at the bottom. You don't have to show it to us now, but the chart at the bottom is for each of the types of lighting fixtures and the numbers that you see on this chart identify which type of lighting fixture is located where. So if you want to see what the lights look like, you go to the chart at the bottom, make sure you know what type of light it is and then go to our exhibits. I have a whole section on lighting and there is a specification. There is actually a series of special specification sheets for every light. These are quite similar to the lights that we proposed last year, very similar. In fact, some of the locations are different because the design of the front parking lot is different. But I think you'll find for those who reviewed those lighting specifications last year, that they're very similar to what we proposed last year. As I already mentioned, street trees, all the street trees are still there. We're going to plant them all. We've added more. Couple more river birch trees on the Columbine roadside. The screening, incidentally, around the parking lot in front of the school not only has to be in front, but it has to go around the side of the parking lot to where Columbine, it faces Columbine Road. So you can see there's, there's screening there. Those are evergreens. All of those are evergreens and some of the larger trees are the existing trees. The Columbine rocks and the existing trees around the Columbine rocks will not be touched. They were left as, after some discussion last year, we originally proposed disturbing them. Then we changed the plan and we left that area as it was and it's still going to be left as it, as it was and always has been for many, many years in front. I've talked about play areas. Some, I'm going to address the surfacing in the play areas in just a minute in response to a letter we received from neighbors. And I think, I, I think we talked about site landscaping, street trees, lighting plan. Just briefly, as I said at the beginning, there's no change in the enrollment of this school. There's no change in the educational philosophy. There's, you know, no change basically in the size of the school or the way the school is going to be run. This school will be more energy efficient. It's a new building. It, it, it's going to have much more efficient windows and insulation. And we didn't provide any, any information about energy efficiency for the last application. It will, it will have high-performance glazing, high wall and roof, R values. All the heating, cooling and water systems will be energy-saving. Roofs will have light-colored surfaces to help reflect solar heat. Interior sensors will monitor all the lighting and air quality and carbon monoxide levels and will make the energy use inside the building much more efficient than it would have been possibly in the old building. Classrooms will have occupancy sensors so that lighting won't be on when they're not occupied. I mentioned photovoltaic panels in my, in our application and neighbors asked about them too. And they said, you know, can you do photovoltaic panels? It's, it's a great feature and we agree. And it would save money for the school and we would very much like to, to use them. The studies that we've done so far indicate that the locations where we could put them are too close to trees. And maybe in the future, the trees will be gone. Maybe there'll be new technology and a different way to do this. So if possible, what we're building into this structure will be the electrical connections that would be necessary in order to have that type of feature on the roof. So we would be ready to try to do something in the future if, if it becomes possible or becomes, you know, cost-effective to put that feature in. And we have thought about it. Nevertheless, the, the final thing is that the new building will certainly be much more energy efficient than the prior renovated building. I've mentioned that for storage of refuse, that we moved the container. I did have a, we did have a question from neighbors in their letter about diapers, paper diapers. And wouldn't, you know, that there'll be a lot of them and won't they smell? And, you know, isn't that a problem for, for refuse storage? And how are we, how are we going to handle it? So the answer that we've provided is that, well, only infants and younger toddlers will be in diapers. This is the way they're handled though. Each diaper is individually bagged before being disposed of in another trash bag. And these trash bags are further put in another bag before being moved to an enclosed dumpster by the professional cleaners at the end of the day. We don't expect any impact from, because of this use of diapers. And, you know, trash removal is based on the waste removal company's schedule and we work with the company to stay on top of any issue like this. In addition, the applicants have a school in Watertown. It's a Goddard School. It's a similar size. They have children with diapers in that school. And they have, they have a dumpster that's located immediately next to a neighbor's house and they have never had a complaint from that neighbor about odor and they have never detected any significant odor themselves. So that's, that's an additional answer, but I think another concern that was raised at our earlier meeting was, you know, wouldn't there be food stored in this, in this refuse container? Because children have to eat their lunches at the school. They don't, we don't prepare meals at these schools. The children bring their own food. But there will be some food that will have to be disposed of. And again, the answer is that the school will arrange for trash pickup as necessary to make sure that there is no odor problem created. And we have relocated the trash container away from Columbine Road as requested. I'm not going to say anything about signs really. Sign, a sign for this building has to be approved through the usual approval process and the sign advisory committee. It, design review committee, and it cannot be approved as part of this process. That would be a public meeting or a public hearing. And there would be plenty of opportunity to weigh in on, you know, whether the signs proposed are appropriate or not. We were asked at the meeting with neighbors if we would prepare a construction management plan, so we have included one with this application. And in the letter sent recently by neighbors, we were asked if we would be willing to only do construction Monday through Friday and not on Saturday. First of all, the construction management plan we've submitted does, it has more restricted hours than the, than the, the hours the town allows. And, you know, we're not going to be doing anything on Sunday or on holidays. If you were to restrict construction to no Saturdays, you would significantly extend the period of time during which this building is going to be constructed. And it's not desirable. We do not want to do that. And I don't think it's to anyone's benefit to do it. I think that, you know, we, we all recognize that during the construction period, it will be more noise and, and so forth. But once the building frame and, and footprint is established and work is going on inside the building, the noise will be less. And I, I just, so we recognize that, we understand why that request has been made, but we don't think it would be, would make sense. It would mean that it would take even longer to construct, to finish this project. There are a lot of other features in the construction management plan. If anyone has questions about them, we can pull it up and look at it. In general, on one of the criteria for site plan approval and for approval of any amendment is development impact in comparison with prior use. As we explained last year, and, you know, it's been a while now since the Who's a Club has been operating at this site. When it was operating fully a number of years ago, there were a lot of big events. They were on the weekends. They were in the evenings and they were in the evenings during the week. And there was no parking really on the site. People parked all over the place, all over Central Ave. They parked on Columbine Road even though they weren't supposed to. And when there was a big event with music, there was definitely an impact on the neighborhood. This is a very different kind of use. This use will only be during the week. It'll be between seven A M. and six P M. When the program is closed, the lighting will be turned off. The only lights you'll see on this building in the evening will be motion sensor, security lighting. And we talked about that last year and we've kept the same features. These are lights that can be adjusted. If there's any complaint about a light shining too directly towards a neighbor's house, when it does come on for security reasons, the light can easily be adjusted. So, you know, this is just different. It, it, there was quite an impact and lots of controversy when the Who's a Club was at this site. And this is a very different type of use and will not have the type of problems that that use did. The school housed in the new building will have no different impact than the school described in the approved plan last year. Estimated trip generation is the same. Capacity is the same. There's one less classroom. There's as much parking on the site as were, as was provided last year on the approved plan. And the consolidated parking location in front will have significant additional screening, which will block the view of not only the parking, but a lot of the view of the building from the street. All of the conditions that are part of the site plan approval dated July twenty-third, twenty twenty should remain in effect, including the requirement that there be a review of trip generation after six months of operation to make sure that that was an accurate estimate. And, you know, there, there are a number of other conditions that would remain in effect as well. We, what I'd like to do, I guess, Sunny, maybe you should just pull up the site plan, the regular page. I think it's page three of the site plan that shows the layout again so that we can review that in a bit more detail. Okay. And you, you make it a little larger. Yeah. So, I mean, we've already looked at this really because we were looking at the landscaping and it's the landscaping on, on, on this site. But it, as you can see in more detail here, not only is there exterior fencing all around the perimeter, there's also fencing around all the play areas to provide security. So once a group of, just small group of children is in a play area, they can't just walk out into another area of the site. They're under supervision at all times. The, the, the design of the school has this, you know, it, it's basically rectangular as was the Who's a Club. And there's a little bit more, there are more walkways. I think there's more of a walkway on the bottom part of the site. The grass area remains in the back. The other area in the back was part of the location was for the parking lot. And that's just now going to be walking trails, open trees, whatever. It's, it's just going to be a natural area. There's a lot of separation for this site from neighbors to the rear. And there's a lot of protection in the form of fences and landscaping to the sides and very significant protection in the form of landscaping in the front of the building. So that's, that's my summary of the project application. I know there's a lot of people here who would like to speak. We'd like to hear their questions. I did want to say one more thing because we had a very, well, I thought interesting concern expressed about the parking lot, the, I'm sorry, the play area turf. Artificial turf is going to be used in the playground areas. And neighbors wrote in and said, well, we've heard that this turf is not safe for young children and wouldn't it be much nicer to be like the village school and have, you know, a grassy area in back of the school? So first of all, so we pulled up a lot more information about what's being used here. One reason it's advantageous to be part of a larger school organization like the Goddard School Incorporated is that they've done a lot of research on the way to design and organize a school and safety features. And this is one of them. And so they know, they've already researched the use of turf, artificial turf. And so they know, they've already researched the use of turf, artificial turf. And the type that's being used on this playground is not the type that was talked about in a Boston Globe article and in several years ago. So the feedback is, this is, this turf is something called X Grass. X Grass Company or manufacturer reviewed the article in the Globe, spoke with several manufacturing and industry experts, and they have assured us that the information, which is a little bit vague in the article, does not apply to this Milton School installation. One important point is there's a lot of reference in that article to rubber infill crumb as a component. This is not used by this supplier. And they've never used it in a playground installation over, and it, and they have over a decade of experience installing this. They use a non-toxic, antimicrobial coated infill at, at all of the Goddard School applications and at this one. Another point that the owner made is that when you use artificial turf, there is an energy conservation aspect to this because it doesn't have to be cut. There's no gas lawnmower. It, it's, doesn't have to be watered. It stays green. It looks attractive all the time. And it also absorbs water. It's a permeable surface. So there, there are some environmental advantages to using turf. At what is being used at the school in any case is definitely safe for young children. There's, the, the Goddard School has provided some extremely detailed information about this type of school because I remember when we began this project, they gave us a long list of trees that you couldn't locate on a preschool site. Because as we know, preschoolers pick things up and put them in their mouths. So it's, it's much longer than the native vegetation list that, that the town provides. And the school has had to be careful not to include any of those trees in this plan. And they've been equally careful in deciding how to, how to cover the play area. This artificial turf, incidentally, was in last year's plan, was improved as part of last year's plan. But it, it's a good point. It's an interesting question. I had never heard about that. And I thought that this is pretty good information that the owner was able to provide. So I think that, that covers everything that I wanted to summarize for you. Sunny, is there anything else that you wanted to add? I will say about scheduling. This, this has been a tremendously, of course, difficult and expensive situation for the owners who had to prepare a whole set of plans that they're now not going to be able to use. And they want to try to be on a construction schedule to begin work this fall and so that they would be able to complete construction and, and open the school in September, a year, approximately a year from now. That's a very tight schedule and it requires that we complete this review process, address any legitimate, significant questions quickly. We are very eager to get this project started. Thank you. Anything else, Sunny, that you wanted to add?
No, thank you, Marion. That was very comprehensive. All I would like to, I guess, say is echoing some of the things that Marion opened with. You know, when we saw the Huzzah Club almost a year and a half, two years ago, we fell in love with the building. We fell in love with the town. And we were committed, I guess, from the beginning. It's unfortunate what happened. It's been a devastating loss for the community and for us. Financially, it's been even more so. And, you know, we've stayed committed to the path and what we want to do and what we want to bring to the neighborhood. So, you know, I know it's different, as Marion said, than the Huzzah Club. Nobody can replace that. You know, that was a historic building, significant. But it had significance personally as well as historically to several. So, you know, like Marion said, the design team, the architect did his best to incorporate all the features. And, you know, we are looking for the support of the town, of our neighbors, who we met with once before. Heard all their concerns. There was feedback from the neighbors that we did not close the loop and for that, you know, I guess, I apologize. You know, we've been busy with the, the prep as well as getting ready to, as Marion said, getting started because it's been, we were supposed to open in October and, you know, here we are in October, having this hearing to get started again. So, you know, it's been, it's been an arduous journey for us, for our family. But, you know, we are committed and, you know, we hope, based on everything you've heard from Marion, you know, it, it communicates that our commitment not only to the town, but our neighbors, we will be good neighbors. You know, if there's any, as Marion said, genuine concerns, which we heard and we've incorporated what we could, what we could incorporate in the design. Obviously, there's things we could not do. And that's not because of no intentions. It's just because it was to meet the requirements. You know, we have done everything we can. So that's all I have to say. I want to thank the town. Thank you, Marion, for all your support so far. And, you know, we are looking forward to being part of Milton Community for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Marion, Ms. McCadrick. I would like to ask Tim Chrowinski. He, he and Allison, the, the planning staff, did a very thorough assessment of the project and I wanted to see if Tim could share some of his thoughts and findings.
Thank you, Danny. So Allison actually took the lead on, on the review of this one and, and was the, the principal author of, of the memo that we sent around earlier. But, but, but I am going to run through it because I, I think, you know, it touches upon some things that are, have, have broader applications for the board. You know, we've talked about the Dover Amendment and Dover Amendment of Protected Use. And I just want to sort of offer just the, a little bit of clarity. This may not be news to anyone, including, you know, folks, you know, in the audience who were, who were here for the previous iteration of this, of this hearing. You know, the Dover Amendment is, is a kind of colloquial name for, for Chapter forty eight, Section three, which have talked about, you know, what, what types of uses can and can't be restricted by zoning. And so Do Town in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is able to pass zoning that restricts certain agricultural, educational and daycare uses. So it's, from a zoning analysis perspective, it would be as if, you know, they were building a single-family house on the site. It's allowed use. That's it. And the, the, the one sort of wrinkle in, in forty eight, Section three is that you are able to put reasonable dimensional height setback bulk kind of restrictions on, on Dover protected uses. To the extent that this project is, is compliant with the underlying zoning in the district, I, I think it can be, you know, safely asserted that, you know, those, those restrictions are reasonable and, and they've been met. So, all of that is to say that, you know, this is a zoning compliant use. The planning board has very little to, to, to no kind of discretion to, to reject a project like this. You know, if, if you think about site plan review, which typically happens in the business district, you know, you've got an allowed use in the business district. It's dimensionally compliant or pre-existing non-conforming. The planning board has the ability to impose reasonable conditions and restrictions that are relevant to the conditions for approval in the bylaw. But you don't have the discretion to put restrictions that would dramatically change the site plan or the design of the building in a way that would make it, you know. So that's just kind of sort of setting the table for what we're doing here and kind of what the expectation for, for the outcome is. You know, there are, the, the other thing to, to remember, and this is something I always like to bring up in the context of you know, if, if, if you went through Chapter forty eight, the Zoning Enabling Act and spent your, your entire day looking for any reference to site plan approval, you know, good luck, because there isn't one. Site plan approval is a creature of local bylaws and case law. Which is to say that the real sort of backstop that we have for analyzing these site plans is our local bylaw. You know, which is sort of consistent with, with, with case law around site plan approval. And really, if there's any kind of question as to sort of, you know, what the planning board's authority is, the first stop for analyzing that is not state statute, but rather the local bylaw. And so, all of that is to say that our kind of analysis of this project and our recommendation to the board is based on those conditions for approval that are in, in, in Section eighty of the zoning bylaw. And so I'm going to, my, the, the, the rest of my kind of spiel here, and, and I won't take too long because we, we've got a lot of folks that want to offer comment, is I, I want to make sure that I read to you and, and to the, the public watching at home what those conditions for site plan approval are and what our analysis of those conditions has been. So this is verbatim from, from the building's zoning bylaw. So the conditions for site plan approval are A, protective adjoining premises against detrimental or offensive uses on the site. B, convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site in relation to adjacent streets, property or movements. C, adequacy of methods for disposal for sewage, refuse and other wastes resulting from the uses permitted or permissible on the site and the methods D, adequacy of space for the off-street loading and unloading of vehicles, goods, products, materials and equipment incidental to the normal operation of the establishment. E, proper use of the site with respect to unit density and proximity of adjacent buildings to each other. And finally, F, the adequacy of lighting to maintain a safe level of illumination on the site and whether lighting is properly shielded to protect adjacent properties. That's all she wrote when it comes to the zoning. And when you think about what the purpose of site plan approval is, as opposed to, you know, for instance, a zoning variance or special permit, which the planning board has a great deal of experience with. Special permits, you know, are kind of enabled by zoning and they have a sort of a laundry list of different sort of discretionary restrictions that the planning board can or cannot impose. A lot of latitude about, you know, uses and design and all things like that. Site plan approval is really meant to sort of look at, we've got a zoning compliant use, but it is, you know, bigger or perhaps more intensive or potentially more impactful than the typical use that you would see in the neighborhood. And so we have this added level of review and kind of, you know, recommendations for conditions to ameliorate those kind of physical impacts of a sort of a, a, a use on a site. And so, you know, Marion touched on this, you know, quite a bit in her presentation. The, the, the project from, you know, from, from, from a look and feel perspective is, is different because the orientation of the building is different. But from the components of the project that actually, you, you know, create those impacts on the neighborhood, the project is substantially the same, if not improved. You know, as Marion said, the capacity is the same as was previously approved. The footprint, while larger, you know, that, 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 that larger footprint actually accounts for greater efficiency of the internal operations. You know, the, 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 the circulation plan is different by virtue of the fact that the orientation of the building is different. But the, the parking ratio, I think there's one extra parking space, you know, which is a generator of, of traffic. So all of those impacts that the planning were previously evaluated and approved are still, are still there. And so, you know, to that extent, you know, we believe that a lot of work that was done and, and the decisions that were made in the previous approval still stand. What we tried to do was evaluate what's different about the plan using those A, B, C, D, E, F kind of conditions for approval. And so I'm just going to really quickly go through, you know, those. You know, A, as, as, as I said earlier, was, was about protection of adjoining premises against detrimental We don't believe that daycare use is, is either detrimental or offensive. But to the extent that there are impacts to abutting property owners, we believe that there's actually better mitigation than the previous iteration of this project. In the previous project, almost all of the parking and circulation was kind of concentrated on the, you know, northerly property line up against that northerly of butter. You know, that is, in, in, in my opinion, and I think in a lot of people's opinion, probably one of the greatest impacts of a project like this is break traffic in and out, is that sort of traffic and circulation. The new plan, you know, concentrates that activity closer to the front of Central Ave, away from, substantially away from that property line and really sort of concentrates all that activity where it's not really abutting anyone except for, you know, obviously the street, which is where the cars are coming from. And, you know, as, 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 as the rendering show, the, the screening and the fencing around the side is substantial. So, you know, those impacts, to the extent that they can be mitigated from a, a light and noise and kind of motion perspective, I think it can be mitigated. The condition, condition B about the convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement. You know, the, the previous project, which utilized the existing semi-circular driveway in front of the Huzzah Club, you know, was required to put an additional curb cut on Central Ave with an in-and-out motion to get into sort of the majority of the parking on the site. The new plan reduces the number of curb cuts on site from three to two. Is just universally just accepted principle that the fewer curb cuts you have, the better. This is where vehicular and pedestrian conflicts happen, where the curb cuts are. So to reduce those numbers is, is really a tremendous benefit. And, and to eliminate that sort of in-and-out motion on the one curb cut so that each of those curb cuts has one motion. There's either a car coming in or a car coming out, is, is, is an approved condition. And, you know, having that one single zone where traffic and circulation happens as opposed to some of it happens in the front of a particular drive, some of it happens elsewhere, again, is an improvement. You know, see the condition about the adequacy of methods for disposal, for refuse and, and, and et cetera. You do have a comment letter from the town engineer. There were a number of requests for just additional information and kind of notations for future requirements, you know, on, on the project, like in, in the realm of kind of red flags that would require, you know, the project to address an issue or, or change of the design in some way. We don't have any input like that from, from the town engineer. So it's really kind of standard issue stuff that we'll continue to review on a staff level as this project proceeds. D, adequacy for the off-street loading. You know, I, I think as Marion said earlier, the, the, the amount of parking that's being provided is, is, you know, everyone on site, I think, but also, you know, to create that space for, for, for loading and, and kind of coming and going. In a way, you know, this is, you know, it's, it's the perniciousness of, of parking minimums as opposed to parking maximums that, you know, parking minimum may be fifteen, but there is no parking maximum. So I think to the extent that there is empirical observable data from other similar facilities that say, this is the amount of cars that are coming and going. This is the typical amount of space we need for a facility of this size. You know, I, I wouldn't call it a gold standard because, you know, it's, every site is different. But we do really like to see that data. We like to see plans that are informed by that data as opposed to modeling, which, you know, models can change, you know, based on, on conditions on the ground. You know, E, i- i- is, is, is the condition about proper use of site with respect to unit density, proximity of adjacent buildings. They're still the single building. The orientation has changed, but it is within the setbacks as, as provided by zoning. And, and so, you know, we feel that that's adequate. And then, you know, finally, about lighting, you know, Marion pointed out, the lighting plan shows no light overspill on providing properties for the public way. And, you know, we think that the plan makes sufficient provisions for, you know, for, for shielding those lights and screening those lights. It would be, you know, I, I, I believe, I haven't looked at the original approval in a while, but I, I do believe there are provisions for dark side compliant lighting, which is again, you know, perfectly within the realm of acceptable conditions on a project like this. So, you know, all of that considered, we're recommending approval of this. We think that the, the development team, you know, has, has done a good job in a, in a really crummy situation. And, you know, a- a- at the end of the day, we have zoning and, you know, we want people to use it. You know, and, and to the extent that, you know, there are issues with the zoning, I, I would encourage people to, to talk to the planning board about that. But, you know, in, in, in situations like this where we've got zoning compliant projects, you know, we do like to see that. So that was a little long. I apologize, but I wanted to make sure we kind of went through, the site plan approval is I want to make sure that everyone was pretty clear on kind of what this was. Thanks for that.
Okay. Well, well, thank you for that very thorough analysis and thank you for explaining the whole situation. So I wanted to see with the, my fellow planning board members, should we talk a little bit or should we just go right into hearing from the public? It's already eight forty-eight, so I'm very interested to hear from the public. But before I do, I just wanted to touch base. Cheryl, Kathleen, Meredith Rich, are you ready to hear from the public as well?
Denny, I don't, I'm not sure how many in the public would like to speak, but I I would like to have to have opportunity for the board to speak tonight. At our last meeting, we had a lot of public comment on another public hearing and the board did not have an opportunity to speak because we had a pretty full agenda. So maybe we could ask folks if they could limit their comments to three minutes and if they have a comment that is already been said by someone else, if they could just state that they agree with the previous speaker. It might just help us have a little bit more time because I do have, I've looked at this application carefully and I do have some comments. And given the time constraint that the applicant has said that they're under, I would like to get my comments heard by the applicant tonight. Okay, so that's all.
Okay, thank you. All right, a- a- all right, with the with the I I guess we can allow the panelists to stay on. And they may be able to answer a question if it arises. But let's, any of the attendees who would like to ask a question or make a comment on the Goddard project that's before us, please raise your hand.
Denny, can can I just real quick, is it possible, and this is maybe a Milton access question, is it possible to make me a host so I can manage? I can sort of bring people out of the attendees list and and get them up to the panel?
That would be great. I would, I would so appreciate that. Can cable access make that so?
Wonderful.
Okay. So I see M. Callahan would like to speak. Are we able to welcome them in? And please unmute.
So I've I've allowed M. Callahan to talk and if yeah, if they unmute, they can they can.
So hi, this is this is Mary Beth Callahan and actually my comment is not particularly about the building structure itself, but I just wanted to say that I have been teaching preschool in Milton for twenty-one years and for the past six amazing years at the Tucker School. So I just wanted to say that the I feel like what you might consider to be the noise is simply wonder and joy that comes from the kids at the Tucker Elementary School. So I just felt like I wanted to, you know, say that because I think it's a very different school environment, what's going on at the Goddard School. And I just wanted to, you know, speak for the Tucker community. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that comment. Okay. All right, and we have Merck Family Fund. I'm sure there's a name with that, but could we welcome the person with that?
Hi.
Hello, welcome. Could I get your name and address?
Yes. Helen and Jenny Russell.
Okay, thank you.
At one ninety Central Ave. We've lived at this address for about twelve years through many lovely events at the Hussey Club. Our, one of our primary concerns is that we will have all of those cars exiting the Hussey Club directly into our driveway that we back out of. We don't have the luxury of a turnaround to front our car out. So they'll be entering, I'm sorry, they'll be entering the Hussey Club. But the impact on trying to back out of a driveway when we have seventy-five cars arriving at that busy time of day and at noon and at five P. M. The other question we have is around the relocation of the hydrant, the mailbox, and the bus stop, which all are directly across the street. So we are, you know, the traffic on the on Central Ave, as we all know, is terrible. But the the impact of of on the cars that will now steer around cars making a right-hand turn if they're heading from the south. And I just worry that designing that entrance and exit and then deciding six months later to mitigate any problems is really a very haphazard approach. It leaves us very few options. So next time you drive by, just imagine where that driveway will be and look directly across the street. The lighting was not the issue for us. I mean, it is an issue, but really trying to back out of a a place where people are entering at those busy times of day. Thank you so much and thank you for your work. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you and thank you for your comments. Okay, so we'll we'll keep track of these questions and and Marion might have some answers at the end or or the applicant may.
Ms. Swenson, while the phone is still open, can I add a little bit? This is Jenny Russell Helen's wife.
Sure, sure.
Just a couple of more questions that weren't addressed by Marion, maybe if you could, and thank you for addressing some of those other ones. Appreciate it and the work that's gone into this. One was, what are the consequences if the time of operations is abused? And another one that we would like to see is again about the traffic study being done in advance. So we have something to compare it against. And I would just like to say that even though the plan may not have changed very much, the fact of the size of the building and the orientation towards central and the reuse of this space is a tremendous impact on this neighborhood. So it just has to be recognized what difference this is going to make to our to our quality of life. And so we are concerned about that and we feel that a a smaller operations would be more acceptable to the neighborhood and to the neighborhood feel. Despite the fact that it's compliant within the zoning, it may not be compliant from a neighborhood residential feel and pride.
Okay. Well, well, thank you very much for your comments and for participating tonight. We will try to see if if Marion or the applicant would like to answer the questions tonight or perhaps at a later date, she might put some, put some, you know, document together with some responses. So thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the attendees that would like to ask a question or provide feedback or comments?
Danny, we we have Beverly Ross Denny, who who never made it back into the attendee pool with her with her hand up.
Thank you. Hello, Ms. Ross Denny.
Thank you. There's a delay on my machine. I need to reboot it, but we're just going to go with the voice until the camera comes on. I do want to say that, you know, I think the neighborhood prefers the school relative to what we had before. And I appreciate that the Vermas have have been resilient in spite of all that's happened. My concern had been about the parking in the dumpster and I appreciate the fact that you moved the dumpster, so I'm not looking at that as I come out of my house in the morning. And I think the crux of my concern has less to do with what the Vermas have done and what the town is now up against, which is in the original plan, the parking was on the side of the building. I think everybody was pretty happy with it. If anything, I think as as business owners, the Vermas didn't care where the parking lot was as long as they had parking for their families. That's a reasonable thing to expect. And unfortunately, because of the fire, it was almost as if they had to press the reset button. And as a person who studied business, I actually did quick math and like delaying this project probably cost over two million dollars in revenue. Those are real numbers. Unfortunately, I think most of the neighbors, including us, and I think the Vermas would say, if the parking was on the side of the building versus the front of the building, if putting it on the side meant that they could get their project done, they would pour the concrete themselves. But because they would have to pursue a variance through the Board of Appeals that is now backed up means that if they even tried to accommodate this simple request, it would cost them more money. And I respect that because I know if it was me and if it was my school, I'd want it open as soon as humanly possible. But I think it's a shame that we're in a position as a town that all parties would reasonably agree as to what the right thing is, but we can't do it because we don't have the capacity to handle an appeal. Think about that. I wouldn't even be on this call for two hours with my seven-year-old who's been sitting here if the Vermas could just have simply asked, can we move a parking lot to the side of the building? So that's why you heard my comment at Citizen Speak, because at some point we have to say that would have been a ridiculous request to ask of a business owner who's going to be bringing revenue into our town and families who lived in this neighborhood for many years and were like, you know, I can deal with the nips in my yard and the drunk people parking in my driveway, but all I want is a parking lot on the side and no one can do that because we're backed up. So anyways, I say all this to say I understand that it's a compliance system. I understand that as soon as that building burnt down, the building had to be in coincide with the current zoning rules. But stop and think about how unreasonable this whole thing is for something that's simple. So with that said, I probably hit my three-minute mark and I hope you do consider how we can work across town committees so that reasonable people can get reasonable things done in a reasonable period of time. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And I I don't know if anybody has said this or explained this, but our our ZBA is backed up because we have been hit with, I think it's nine to ten forty Bs. And we have to respond to each of those forty B applications in a reasonable amount of time, many, many deadlines. They've increased the zoning Board of Appeals membership through appointments. I I I I don't even know how many ZBA appointed members we have right now, but we have multiple boards running around the clock on a weekly basis and and doing volunteer work. So I I think Ms. Ross Denny learned this recently and it's it's been something that's been going on. This, you know, we 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 were hit with all these around the time that the pandemic hit. So a lot has has just been has has been overwhelming our our capacity in a pandemic when we really want to do a public process as best we can. So we've all been up against it. Thank you. All right. Did we have anyone else? Did did Merck Family Fund, have they, I think they may have already commented. So anyone else want to raise their hand, speak on this topic? I'm not seeing any hands raised. Are you, Tim? Well, Merck Family.
I don't know if the Russells want to, well, we have, we have a fresh hand, so maybe we'll have Paul talk.
Okay, Paul, you're welcome to talk. Please unmute and please tell us your name and address.
Hi, my name is Paul Kanoukan. I live at two-two-four Elliott Street. We back up on Maple Street. Both my wife and I walk every day up Maple Street, down along Central Ave in front of the former Hussey Club and around the pond. Oftentimes, we are going against the stream of the kids coming out of out of the school there, the Glover School. And and we love to see it. We were very sad. We we remember many, many times at the Hussey Club, Columbine Neighbors Association had many events there. We were sorry, sorry to see it it go. But as as a as a couple who have raised two children in Milton from infancy have understood the the difficulty of finding care, both of us working for our our kids. A daughter now who is our first grandson, who's been able to work because she's been able to find daycare if she lives in DC. We really were really delighted to see that the Hussey Club was going to become a place where children could be taken care of so that their parents could work and still have a safe place for them to go to school. And we think Milton needs that. So we're, in general, we're very, very delighted. And we hope that this school will will get constructed and open just as soon as possible. So that's really my comment. I just wanted to add my my support for for the school.
Well, thank you, Mr. Kanoukan. Thank you so much for your time and participation. We have William Atwood. Can we have William Atwood enter the panelists and please unmute and tell us your name and address, please?
William.
Have you?
Sorry, I I may I may have pressed a wrong button there. If Mr. Atwood could uh could unmute, sorry.
Okay.
Yes, we can. And could I get your address, Mr. Atwood?
My wife and I live at eighty-eight Columbine. We are neighbors directly above the rear of the property. I just wanted to say two quick things. One is the Hussey Club presented a different set of challenges. As Helen and Jenny said, we felt in for the majority of the time the Hussey Club was there, they were great neighbors and we never really had too many issues with the club's operation. And I recognize that the school is a different kind of group, but the use of the school will be, you know, every day in a very different way. When the Hussey Club actually was using it, I think they were limited to a certain number of functions that they could perform per year. So it wasn't as if they were doing them all the time always. So I just want to remind everyone that this is a very different set of challenges. I didn't move in next to a school when I bought this home and now, so it I and I appreciate Sunny has been very sensitive to trying to accommodate the various concerns of neighbors. And and there may be new ones that come up when the project starts, so I wanted to suggest that good communications with the neighbors will be critical. And in the earlier meetings, you had stressed, Sunny, that you were going to try to really make it a neighborhood school and encourage families from the neighborhood to attend and walk in with their children if possible. And so I didn't, I haven't heard that lately, but I think affirming that would alleviate a lot of the parking and traffic concerns, the more you could be really encouraging all of your families to walk to school and 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 try to really get their the word out that this is a great neighborhood school where where people can walk to it. And I think that would that would ease some of, perhaps, some of the parking and traffic issues. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you for participating. Thank you, Mr. Atwood. Okay, Paul, did you already, are are you all set, Paul? You've already spoken. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak tonight on the Goddard School? I am not seeing anything in the attendees. So at this time, I would like to hear from the planning board members about their thoughts. Oh, I'm sorry, there's one more attendee that would like to speak, Deborah Felton. Deborah Felton, and before you speak, Deborah, please unmute, but I just wanted to do a twenty-three B three disclosure. I'm a member of the Fuller Village Board and Deborah Felton is a, I think she's the executive director. I call her the grand poobah. But but pursuant to guidance from the State Ethics Commission, I feel that I can be fair and objective in hearing from Deborah Felton on this topic. Deborah, welcome.
Thank you. This is, this was totally an error. I am waiting to speak on the memory tour. Sorry. I was plugging in because we've been on so long that my battery went low. But you will hear from me if I can stay awake.
We'll try to quicken things up, but I'll have my disclosure ready again. Okay, thank you. Let's see, attendees. No more attendees. Okay, here we go. Planning board members, please weigh in. What, Cheryl, you have some things to talk about? Let's hear it.
All right, I'd like to share screen to pull the plans up, okay?
Let's see.
I can do it.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you, first of all, for a complete and thorough application. I do appreciate that. It did take some time to work through it, which is all good, though, because I think you anticipated a lot of the questions and materials that we might ask for. And so it was helpful to get it. I appreciate Ms. Ross Denny's comments about the parking lot location. From an architectural and planning perspective, parking lots at the front door, right next, literally right next to the front door is not where I would typically like to see them. I know it's the most convenient, but it does put parking as as a prime location. put parking at the prime location and it does set the tone for the building as more of a driving place than a walking place. However, when we look at whether something's zoning compliance, in this case, I think we might need to look at our, our zoning and our rules and regs and about having where we locate parking with respect to the front of a building. So this is not something that this application in particular can solve. However, I think we can look at this parking lot. And we can look at the design and we can ask some questions really about the necessity of 31 spaces, because the 31 spaces is driving the parking to be nearly the entire length of the front of the building and the front of the property. Leaving very little setback on the north and a bituminous berm on the south. And for what is shown on this plan is a bit berm down at the bottom of the timinous berm. We can I'll get to on the grading plan shortly and why that's there. But the, the other thing is just a narrow setback at the north here, which doesn't allow for any kind of landscaping really on that side, because when we get to the grading plan, we see that there's a swale here. So I think I want to really see whether this parking lot could be reduced perhaps by two parking spaces so that we could pull this in a little bit further from the sides, which would also, I was looking at the existing curb cuts and the existing curb cut, I believe, is in this location. This location, the curb cut, is really quite close to the Columbine Road intersection. Normally, I think transportation engineers would like to see more distance between the drive location like this and an intersection. So I'd like to hear from the applicant whether they've, they've considered that. You know, people coming in and out of Columbine and you have people coming in and out of this very close by. So then if I go to the to the grading plan, which I believe is here. And I, I mentioned the berm and I, and one of the reasons these things are important is because these are the boundaries which the abutters see and feel. It's not so much internal to hear what they will see and feel. It's really what they perceive from the street. And so this building's first floor elevation is set at 55. And grade out at this location is about 50. So grade itself is about five feet above, I mean, first floor elevation about five feet above grade, which isn't unusual for some buildings, especially historic buildings, because there would be steps up. But because of the interconnectivity between the floor and the playgrounds, which are coming out now at grade, there is still being done to, to get this to be at the same level. Whereas when the Hussey Club plan, there were ramps to get down to the, to the playgrounds. So what this has necessitated is this stone wall is really retaining wall here. And it's, it's not truly designed. It says it's to be designed by a structural engineer. And we'll get to the, the drawings for that in a moment. But the top of that wall is at 55. And again, grade is down here. Now at 48. So now we're looking at a seven foot change of elevation between sidewalk and the top of the wall. And then there's a fence on top of that wall as well. And there's really not a lot of design attention paid, I think, to this, this area along the sidewalk along Columbine. And, but the, even the landscaping, which I'll get to as well. So you can see it's sloping up that wall. And then it's also sloping down to this corner where there's a catch basin. And it's fairly, it's fairly flat in here, even though there's a swale which is pointing down. So the swale is supposed to collect the water and, and bring it down to that catch basin. So this is the sloping down to that swale. So in a, I, I'd like for the site engineer to talk a little bit about, they're going to make sure that where this is fairly flat to the adjacent property, that they're not going to get stormwater rain off going into this adjacent property over here. One thing I want to go back to the site plan, sorry. I forgot to point out something I wanted to ask about. This enclosure around the dumpster. On one of the detail sheets, it says that they're going to provide information, but it just shows the concrete pad. It doesn't actually, there's no information about what that enclosure is made out of and what it looks like, how tall it is. So I think we'd like some more information on that. And now to the to the landscape plan. This landscape plan. It appears to have been prepared by a civil engineer rather than a landscape architect. Oftentimes, when we get a plan that's prepared by a landscape architect, we'll get cut sheets or photos that are included on the drawing, which actually show us what some of the plant materials are. It seems to me that we could have some more information and perhaps a little enhanced design along this transition between the sidewalk on Columbine and that stone wall and fence here. And if we're able to pull this back a little, would that change whether we need this asphalt berm here and fence here? Or we can at least push it away from Columbine and the perception that neighbors will have. If we look at the that boundary here, if we go back to the site plan, it says this is an existing retaining wall. And that it will need to be looked at and see if it needs to be repaired. But then there's also a new retaining wall right here. And then there's a fence along here and there's a swale within here. And then there's new plant materials here. And it's all within like a five or six foot space, which seems like kind of a tight buffer. So if the engineer could comment on that, or the landscape architect could come on, comment on how that's all going to work a little bit better, I think that would be helpful.
So, and so, would you like to hear from the engineer or the now, or do you want to continue all your questions and then?
Well, I think if I could get all of my questions, Denny, and maybe we get everybody else's questions. That way we can get them all out there and then get time to get responses tonight. Great. But if not, then the responses could come in two weeks hopefully at the next meeting. That, that makes sense?
That's great. Keep going. Thank you.
The architecture, I don't have any particular questions or comments about. I think they did a nice job of having something which is, you know, sympathetic to what was there before. It's residential in terms of its kind of character. It meets the height limits and so forth. So I have, I don't have any comments on that. I do have comments on the photometrics. But before I get to that, this is what's, um, this exhibit is called the stone wall concept. And this is really not labeled as such, but this is the stone wall with the fence on top that faces Columbine. And it really would be nice to have a better rendition. This is as if the, the land is flat. I'm not sure that's truly flat across Columbine there. And with some heights to understand the heights of these walls and the heights of the grade. And then where the landscaping could be. I think a transition up so that that stone wall has landscaping in front of it that kind of slopes down to the street. This could have a little more attention paid to it, I believe. And then on the photometrics. Scroll down to those. You really do need your glasses to see this. But if we look at it, there's a pole, so the P3 and a pole, which is a P4. So there's one here, one here, one here, one here, one here, one here and one here. And I looked up the dark sky information. And there's something called the International Dark Sky Association Information Sheet 77, which has recommended lighting levels for exterior lighting. And they reference the Illuminating Engineering Society of North America Lighting Handbook. And they do cite some recommendations for parking areas. And they have educational facilities having an average foot candle level of 0.8 and a minimum of 0.2. And the reason I bring this up is while there's no light spill to neighbors, there is potential for this to be, you know, something that, you know, neighbors are impacted by if it's a pretty bright parking lot. I think we can all envision bright parking lots. And, you know, we, if we get this right size to what is recommended as for this type of use, I think it, it could be an improvement. So for example, if I zoom in a little further and you remember I said average of 0.8 and a minimum of 0.2 at this drive, we have as much as 3.8, 2.4, 1.1 down to 0.5 here. So there's an exceeding the minimums and exceeding the averages across this parking lot. So I'd like to hear from the engineer who's, or the lighting designer who's laid out this parking lot. See if they can either reduce the foot candle levels or reduce the number of fixtures so they can bring that light level down in that parking lot. And then, as far as the light fixtures themselves, those pole lights look like this. And what we've done in other parking lots is have, suggested a fixture, which are, they are available. They have more historic character to them, be used to light parking areas. And we did that for the Henry's Building on the exterior parking lot. Because if you look at what this proposed for the building itself, the ones that are mounted on the building, they are more in keeping with the architecture of the building here. And so, and then I think two more comments. One has to do with the comments about the energy efficiency. One thing that's been happening in terms of energy efficiency and clean energy and global warming is that there's been a real move to have buildings be all electric. And part of that is that they can take advantage of clean energy as it becomes available, such as wind that's being proposed off the shore here. If you're all electric, that your source of energy for that electric, electricity for your heating and cooling and other needs in the building can become greener as, as the source becomes greener. So I wanted to find out if their intention is to use gas or electric. And then lastly, on the construction management plan, there's some provision about tree protection, but I think we'd like to likely see that enhanced. I think I have to go back up to that quickly. Because it says that there would be fencing around the trees where possible. But that if fencing is not possible, then roots be protected. And I'd rather see that this be, that this would be only, that this not really be allowed, this last piece, unless there was no other way to build it and that we would like the planning department to take a look at where that would be proposed before it's done. And those are my comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Cheryl. If you could keep your, your presentation up. When you were mentioning lighting, I wanted to hear your thoughts, Cheryl. In the past, we have in, in various park, parking and living areas, we have suggested that they put the light fixture on a lower pole. And I didn't know if you had given that any thought.
Yeah, the 10 feet that they have, Denny, is usually what we've come down to from say 12 or 14 or something like that. Yeah. And the 10 feet, you know, does trigger probably more poles because your throw for those fixtures is reduced. But it does keep that light level down too.
All right. If you wouldn't mind going to the first page that you looked at, the very first page. Yes, the site plan itself, yes. I'm looking for the visual that you showed. Oh, yeah, there it is. Yeah, I was looking at the, the, the entry into the site and exit off the site. I didn't know if the, I, I agree with Cheryl's point that I, I was a little bit concerned of how close the entry is to, what's that street that runs along? Yeah, the Columbine. Thank you. Yeah, I was a little bit concerned about that also, that it's directly across from a driveway. And, and I, I thought Cheryl might be on to something, possibly moving it further away from Columbine. But also I didn't know if the town engineer or if Tim or Allison sort of looked at the, is that entry wide enough? The entry and the exit openings, are those wide enough? And I wanted to understand, are there sidewalks? I, I'm not really seeing them on this visual. Because I thought that the, one of the commenters made a really good point. We would like people to walk. There's some really good sidewalks on Central Avenue and and it would be great if, if families could walk to school. So are they, are they good sidewalks?
So Denny, I, I circle where it says sidewalks, whether they're good or not, I guess. You know, they
There would be, it would be great to have a sidewalk along the entry into, to those locations. You know what I'm saying? I, I'm not seeing them, but go ahead. I'm sorry I interrupted you.
Sorry. I circled where it says paved sidewalk and they do have a connection. If you can see.
There's a sidewalk shown on the picture.
Yeah, if you see the sidewalk.
Yeah.
That I circled. As far as the width of the roadways, you can see it's the entrance 20. I mean, 20, I would like to hear about that too from the engineer because it's one way. And, you know, we've had some streets that are, have come into us to propose less than 20 feet. And, you know, I think it'd be interesting because I, I wonder if that could get down to more like 15 feet and and maybe that would help with the overall width of the parking lot as well.
Okay.
I forgot to mention, Denny, sorry, is with this parking lot being like this, where would snow storage even go? You know, with a berm and a fence in this location, no room on this side and a lot of landscaping here and a sidewalk here. I, I don't even know where the snow would go.
Okay. All right, snow storage. Okay. All right. Well, those are a lot of really, really good questions. Did anybody else want to provide any questions or comments? Anyone else from the planning board?
I had a few.
Oh, good. Thank you, Meredith. Please do.
So this area is, you know, and obviously it was a tremendous loss, pretty devastating to Milton residents. And it really was a historic building that we understand, you know, the developers, you know, there's nothing they can do and, and to bring that, to bring that same building back. But it was a historic, a very historic structure. And in this neighborhood, I think it's really important to the neighbors to keep a residential feel and for this building not to feel like a commercial building. I think of just, in just some really small ways, they could change a few things on the, on the exterior and the finishes to really give it a, not the same patina that it had, but to give it a sense of a little more timeless character. One of the suggestions I would have is the siding, rather than doing a cement shingle, which can be sort of a cold feel, they could actually do a dipped, a woods shingle, similar to Beverly's House across the street, which is so beautiful. And, and the Atwoods next door, it's, it just would be more in, in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood. So I would encourage that on the facade. And it's similar if you drive through Walcott Woods, they've done that on new construction, on new buildings, and it just gives a sense of an older, an older feel. I was, I was also, I was involved actually with the renovation of the, at the time of the village school and the new building of the center school. And I, while I would like to see the size contained and be the same size as what the Hussey Club was, what I, what we really learned was the importance of a gross motor space within the building is a real attribute to any school because there's so many bad weather days where children, it's for whatever reason, either temperatures are too cold or rain, that it's really difficult to go outside. So the gross motor space that the center schools put in has just been invaluable. Especially, you know, to the younger children. Especially, you know, to the younger children who really need to burn off their energy. And um, so I, 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 I do understand um, a little bit on, on needing to put that space in. Also thinking about the windows, um, it's really, I think it's really important that when you're trying to give a good, um, a sense of of place and, and in, um, you can really ruin a building if you don't do good windows and doors. And I think we learned that at Walcott Woods, they did an excellent job. They used sort of a more of an architectural window, which um, I think Walcott Woods used Marvin, but Tella also does one. You can take a drive through and just see just the quality of the windows. It just does, it, it doesn't make it look like a cheap building. It makes it look more residential and more again in keeping. You know, a little detail like adding lattice on the side view of the entrance, that just would give just, you know, a, and you know, sort of a um, a sense of what was um, once there. That's the way the, the entrance of the Housa Club. And also, um, the front was all shingle before and as sometimes, you know, stone veneers can be really nice, but they can also look really cheap. And they can also, just in a short period of time, just not look, you know, in, in good condition and deteriorate quickly. So I actually would like to see more of a all shingle front. Um, again, in keeping with what the Housa Club had been. I would like to see also, it would be great to see, um, I agree with Cheryl on the lighting. Lanterns maybe on either side of the entryway to the, to the front. Um, and more of in the back, more of a historic lighting rather than just a simple contemporary light would be more fitting for the site. And on the center school, they actually were able to, um, they have a light that after a certain time on a timer, they're actually on motion detectors so that the lights, there's no light on at night unless there's somebody, a car vehicle drives in and then the motion um, detector comes on. So that might be a possibility just to keep any um, sort of lighting away from the neighbors. On the southwest, on the southwest elevation on what we received, it just shows a blank wall and a blank roof, and I'm assuming that's the same, it would be shingle and asphalt shingle on that. It just wasn't detailed on that. Again, the front full columns would be nice rather than having the stone base, which on many residential properties, I just see deteriorate and water damage and they just, they really don't look good after ten or fifteen years. I agree lawn, I would much prefer to see lawn in a natural feel rather than turf. As most of the other playgrounds in town have. A way to minimize the feel of the, um, the look and maybe the size and scale is sometimes to add shutters. At least to the first floor windows can sometimes reduce the feel of amassing of the, of a, of the building. Trim again, um, rather than it has the trim being cement, I would rather see something more of a PVC which resemble, resembles wood, I think would be much more in keeping again with the neighborhood. I think pulling, if you could pull the parking back slightly and just create a little bit more of a green space, we don't have any sort of a landscape plan. Um, what, what we have, the visual sort of is from the street front, which shows trees and we can't really see the front of the building to see what kind of landscaping would be done. So rather than just having parking spaces pull right up to a sidewalk, it might be nice to show if we could and slightly pull that back and have a little bit more of a, some shrubs and trees, again, giving it more of a residential feel and, and um, less of a commercial feel. And the, an example for actually a dumpster enclosure, which is really nice. If somebody wanted to take a drive up to the Eustace Estate and drive to the back lot, they've done a really good job of having a dumpster with a really nice um, enclosure, which is tasteful and would be very appropriate for this. And um, lastly, I um, I would be open to a sidewalk if the other um, members were interested in doing that. I'm, I, this was a site that I loved um, and familiar with, but I'd be happy to go up and, and take a look and walk it with the developers. So that's it.
Excellent. Thank you. I, I think those sound like wonderful ideas. I think, I, I think you made a lot of really good points uh, about um, you know, less of a commercial feel and more of a residential feel. I was thinking about um, the same idea. I'd love to get a little bit of green in there. So I love your idea of pulling the sidewalk back. I think that could make a really big difference. I was, I was trying to make it a nicer pedestrian experience. So thank you. I think these are great points. Uh, Kathleen or Rich, did um, you have any comments you wanted to make?
I'll let Rich go first.
All right, thanks. I, I was gonna let you, I was quiet to let you go first. That's okay. Uh, no, I don't, I honestly, I, I, I thought Marion and the applicant did a fantastic job. I, you know, I really thought it was thorough. Obviously did a great job walking back through it i- with his opinions. You know, I really don't have much more to add. I, I mean, I do agree with the things that Cheryl is just mentioning. I thought those are really, especially uh, the one about the parking. It'd be interesting to hear what um, the applicant has to say about that. Yeah, yeah, no, I, I, I don't have much more. Yeah, I, I thought they were, I thought it was great. I, I, I mean, I like, I like the project. Um, it seems like a lot of thought went into it. So yeah, I'm interested in hearing, airing the next iteration.
Oh, good. And are you interested in a sidewalk as well? I am.
Um, yeah, I, I mean, yeah, I mean, I'd be interested. I just, it all depends. I mean, it's, my days have been tough. The last few times we tried to go wa- um, through walks, I just, my, my days are just, it'd have to be early, early in the morning and I can usually do it.
Okay, okay, great. All right, Kathleen.
Um, I just uh, would just think as, as everybody else has said, you know, I appreciate the fact that these folks have had to take a terrible situation and I, and turn it into something better. And you know, we loved the old building, um, and we're in the conversations that we had around the initial application. We're really addressing trying to keep that, that building. And we reali- I realized that a new construction is going to be obviously more energy efficient, obviously more space efficient. And uh, and so I think with the little tweaks of, of the parking, um, a little bit better look of the landscaping, I'm not opposed at all to the idea of, 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 of artificial turf and stuff. I mean, I know what, how hard it is to, to grow grass and keep it and I, and I, I, I appreciate the fact that the Goddard School has a lot of experience running these kinds of schools and their information is helpful and what they feel is the best um, operational characteristics for their program. I would point out that this has come up a couple of times about what the role of the planning board is. And that this is really sort of where I'm addressing the public on this is that, you know, we issue the permit, but the, the planning board has no ability to do enforcement. So if there is a construction management plan and there's some issues with what's going on, that's really something that has to be addressed by the building inspector. I don't, the planning board has no police authority to sort of call out the cops when there's an issue with these construction management plans and, you know, with excessive noise or this and that in terms of the construction. And, and I just wanted to point that out because there seems to be some some issue around town about the fact that we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing. And um, and not enforcing the provisions of our permits. But as I said, that's not really unfortunately our role. And I appreciate the, you know, the issue about the working with the zoning board and working with the planning board. And the fact that that's, um, you know, it would be better if there was sort of more cross-current. I used to be on the zoning board and I was on the zoning board hearings for the original, for the conversion of the Housa Club to a now failed um, entertaining venue. But um, uh, unfortunately, the law isn't set up for us to work in tandem with the zoning board as much as we would like and maybe the planning board probably, the, we, the zoning board might not want our help, but but the, uh, but unfortunately, we, the way the law is set up, we really, there's not a whole lot we can do to cross address problems like this. So um, I just wanted to sort of point that out for people watching at home. And uh, and I just, I appreciate this project. I appreciate the fact that there's, you know, been attempts to make the new building look, you know, more appropriate. And I think Cheryl and Meredith's comments have been good in terms of the suggestions on perhaps reducing the parking a bit, reducing the width of the driveway to allow for more landscaping and a softer look to the front. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I um, I appreciate all of the, the thought that the other planning board members put into this. I would like to do a sidewalk as well. I'm, I'm trying, I, I just want to understand that walkability onto the site and walkability off the site and integration with the walkability and the traffic and parking that's coming and going. So that's something I sort of need to see on site. So I'm very interested in a sidewalk. So talk to Marion, uh, Ms. McCadrick about setting something up. And then I, I was reading the letter from the neighbors and I just wasn't sure. There was a question about are there any mitigation measures such as access to the playgrounds for neighborhood families? And I didn't know if the neighbors meant they, they want to fence it off because they're afraid it's an attractive nuisance? Or did the neighbors want access to the playground areas perhaps in off hours? And so that, that's a question I have for the public. If anybody wants to send me an email, I'm on the Town of Milton website under the planning board. Um, and then also, um, I do feel for the neighbors when they say, you know, why do we create a building that's big enough for a hundred and sixty-five children when we only intend to have between a hundred and a hundred and twenty? So I could use more, more of an explanation from the applicant on that. What, because if it's, if we're really only going to have a maximum of, of a hundred and twenty, maybe that could help some of the issues that Cheryl was raising and just make it a better more safer, easier access site. And I had the same question about the parking. And uh, the dark sky compliant lights. I love the idea of getting solar on there at some point. And has there already been a traffic study in this area? Maybe the town staff could help me understand that. I, I wouldn't be surprised if there's already been a traffic study. Or are we only counting on the Goddard's traffic analysis from other projects? I thought that the neighbors raised an important question there. I agree with Meredith. I think natural grass is great looking and it's, it's a, it's wonderful soft for children. And, and the whole backyard habitat idea is, is much more appealing to me. But I, so I'm, I am interested in that. Um, and then the standard hours of you know, operation from the town, I thought Marion did have, Ms. McCadrick had a pretty good explanation of that, that they really want to just rush through the noisy construction, get it done as quickly as they can, as opposed to dragging it out longer. But I, I did think that was a good question. And I was wondering what the general thing we do on sites is and Joe, Joe Kondak tries to keep us similar on every site. Um, so I was just wondering what the, what the standard was. And then I do understand the neighborhood's concern about um, that, you know, if this building, if this business use doesn't, I mean, I'm sorry, the school use, daycare center use doesn't work out, this building would be repurposed, um, probably for another commercial use. So that.
They'd have to come back. They have to comply with zoning. You can't, you know, you still have, you can't have a use there that's, unless it's a Dover use. So it'd have to be another school. You couldn't turn it into something else. It wouldn't comply with zoning.
But once you have a building there, I guess I'm, it's, it's gonna be a forever building, I'm guessing. So um, I can understand that, and, and that's why the question of, does it have to be big enough for a hundred and sixty-five kids? Or would one hundred and twenty really suffice the need? And then, and, and, and make it a, a much better planned site, taking into account the topography issues and, and um, retaining walls and, and matters that Cheryl brought up. So I just wanted to add that to the list. Okay, so given that we have a very long list, I think um, I think it would be a good idea to welcome them back and to welcome a sidewalk in the meantime.
But can I just point something out for in terms of, uh, you know, as an architect, um, who has done adaptive reuse on projects, you know, one of the first things you look at, if you want to look at whether the building would convert to housing is the depth of the building. Because uh, you know, you get spaces that are too deep and it's hard to put housing in. But if you look at this, I mean, uh, these, these spaces here uh, could be um, converted into housing. It would be multifamily housing at the scale of this building most likely, although I suppose somebody might want a twelve thousand square foot home. But you know, the uh, so it doesn't just, it doesn't just have to be commercial use, I want to point out that's all.
Okay. Well, that sounds good to me. There's certainly need for housing in our town. So thank you. Okay.
Green share here, Betty now, okay?
Yes, thank you for doing that. That was very helpful Cheryl. Okay, so um, I guess I would, I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. McCadrick, did you want to um, respond to my suggestion of coming back and, and doing a sidewalk?
Well, as far as the sidewalk goes, at least personally, I'm available anytime you want to do it.
Oh, you're.
Early in the morning. So um, I think it's, the coordination is probably more among the planning board members. I just want to say that. If other members of the team or the owners want to be there, um, we, I'm sure they'll do their best. But in order to walk the site, you don't necessarily need them. But I, so I would say try to work out a time amongst yourselves and I think it should be within the next week. Because we, we're going to address to, to every, first of all, I'm going to answer questions when I'm given the opportunity this evening. Possibly ask the engineer to answer some of the questions. But uh, if we're going to try to make any revisions to this plan, we're going to do it fast. Because we're under a very tight time constraint. Um, but I appreciate the suggestions and ideas. They're very interesting. So um, do you want to work out a time now for the sidewalk? Do you want to wait till?
I, I, I could do Saturday morning. I don't know how the other members feel.
I'm out.
You can't do it. You don't want to do a sidewalk period or? Okay, flat out, flat out. Okay. All right. She's overcommitted. Okay.
She's gonna be away, but how long are you?
Don't, you don't need to announce that on television. Thank you very much.
All right, sorry. You're gonna be away there for a day.
Okay, well.
Danny, I'm around. Uh, so Saturday morning, I mean, I can suggest.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right. Does Saturday morning work for you Cheryl?
I believe so.
Okay, how about you Meredith? Saturday morning? Okay. Um, I'm an early bird, but, so I could do, I could do nine o'clock, I could do eight o'clock, I could do ten o'clock.
I do have a commitment at ten thirty, sorry. So I could do before ten thirty.
Yeah, Danny, just for what it's worth, I'm, I drop my son off at Milton High School at eight AM. So I, I'm, I'm in my car at that point.
Okay, I could do eight thirty, eight thirty or nine. Um, what do you think Meredith? Eight thirty or nine?
Whatever everyone else decides. Nine would be preferable, but.
Let's do nine. Let's do nine. Okay, let's do this. Nine o'clock Saturday morning. Tim, does that give you enough time to post it? No, no. Oh, shoot.
Site inspections are exempt from the open meeting law. So um, as long as you guys promise to just look and don't talk.
Right.
You guys are all set.
Okay, nine o'clock Saturday morning. We won't talk amongst ourselves. We can ask for information, right, of the applicant, but we can't compare notes.
I would just be quiet for.
Don't even ask.
Don't even ask questions. Just write down your questions, give them to Tim later. How's that?
Yep.
That sounds good.
Okay, thank you very much Marion. Um, and um.
See you Saturday plus.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Okay, so um, to the, I, I'd like. Okay, so I'm to the, I I'd like to go through the the comments, both from neighbors and from the board, to the extent that I can. Might have something that the our engineer is here, our architect is here. So some of those comments, I think, could be addressed by then. I'm gonna go backwards. Because that's the way I've taken my notes, so I'll start with the end. There was a question, I think, from you, Danny, about usual hours for construction and how they're generally enforced. The town does have a bylaw that governs construction and it allows Saturday work. And the usual, as far as I've seen in other projects, is that there is Saturday work on construction practice. And the reason is always given is that if you were to eliminate Saturdays, you're pushing any construction project that's, say, nine months in duration. You're pushing it ahead at least a month. So it it's there's not it's sort of like get the pain over with it more quickly rather than prolong it, but I do know
And what are the hours generally, the hours on a Saturday, is it a little later?
Whatever I put in the construction management
And we can't legally enforce, we can't legally impose different hours on a Dover use than we would on another kind of use.
We are offering to do the hours and the and the conditions, and I'll certainly observe the tree protection discussion, you know, we'll reference that. We are, we are willing to do the hours that we proposed, we're offering to do those hours. They are a little bit more restrictive than the town's requirement. And I believe that that's correct, Kathleen O'Donnell's comment that otherwise, I don't think you can force, you know, a Dover amendment applicant to have stricter hours.
Right. Okay, thank you for that information.
The reason we're not offering it is we we don't see any point in making a longer construction period, and we have a very tight timeframe here, so. Okay. The question that was asked in the letter
It's eight to five on Saturdays and seven to six, Monday through Friday.
Eight to five Saturday, okay. Okay. So I assume that's what we put in, if I didn't put in hours
No, that's in your construction plan.
Right, oh, okay, fine, good, okay. The question about mitigation, I believe that that was directed at whether there would be access for the public to the playground areas. And we were asked that question last year and we answered it the same way. I have sent a letter back with answers to these questions. Just sent it back this morning, so it will get on the town website. But our answer is that no, there will not be access during the school day. Obviously, there has to be security for the children who are in the playground areas. The problem with trying with opening up playground areas at night is safety, is keeping the areas in good condition and safe and avoiding congregating kids congregating in these areas. And and clearly concerns about safety when there's nobody on site supervising that use. So but these will be fenced, playground areas, they will be secure, they will not be open for public use. And, you know, that has to be our answer at this point. And that was the same answer we gave last year and the planning board agreed with it. I'm gonna go back as I go through backwards, as I said. I was a little confused about Meredith's comments about screening. I mean, there's twenty-five feet of screening provided along Central Ave and around the corner on Columbine Road around the parking lot. The parking lot edge is not at the street. That's a requirement in our parking bylaw, section seven. So we're following the parking bylaw. You can look at the type of screening we provided. It's looks very dense and thick, but look at it if you have suggestions or ideas about making it better, but
No, Marion, that was great. The screening, sorry, just the screening was against the front of the building? Between the sidewalk and the front of the building.
Oh, you mean, you like foundation plantings?
Foundation plantings, exactly. So it looks like the it comes right up and that there's not a sort of a green buffer, which would give it more of a residential feel versus commercial where you don't you pull right up, there's a sidewalk, but the sidewalk isn't right up against the building. There's a little bit of a buffer, you know, that maybe you push it out
Well, there might be room to put something in there, I mean, that's
I know you'd lose it on Central. I know you'd lose Central, you know, a little bit of that screening, but but it would be really nice, I think, to have a a more green buffer in front of the building.
Okay, I I I get it. I I didn't understand your comment, and we can get back to you on that. And then on on lighting, maybe I didn't make it clear, but this is the same as what we said last year in our application and what the planning board approved is. There will be no lighting at night. There will be security lights that will only, they will have motion detectors. They only come on if there's something going on right around the school. And I know sometimes motion detectors come on when a squirrel runs by them or something like that. So they do come on from time to time. These will be, these are the same ones we proposed last year. They're adjustable so that if one does shine towards a neighbor's property, it will be adjusted as soon as we hear that there's a problem pointing downwards or back towards the school. The other lighting, all the lighting on the building and on the parking lot will be turned off when this program is is ending. So it won't be right at six o'clock, probably, because teachers will take a few minutes to finish up what they're doing and get out of the building. But there's no lighting that's going to be on at night. And no lighting that's going to be on on the dark part of the day on the weekends. We do have lanterns. I mean, as far as the lighting in the back of the building goes, again, you have to remember, this school's only open from seven AM to six PM. So I don't know how much anybody's going to be looking at the lighting in the back of the building. Its primary function would be, you know, I guess if there were some use of a playground area after dark, which I I would suspect doesn't even occur, but maybe the applicant would like to respond to that as well. Yes, the reason we provided gross, you know, and toddler indoor play areas for exactly the reason Meredith mentioned, which is is a lot of times when the weather just doesn't permit using outdoor play areas, and that's what increased the footprint of this building, was was allowing that space to be designed into this new building. We'll take I guess we'll have to go back and look at Meredith's comments on, you know, alternative siding. Purpose of the appearance of this siding was supposed to be shingled and similar looking to the original Husek building. You know, it, I mean, it is a school. The exterior materials need to be durable and relatively low cost to maintain. So those will be criteria, and we'll look back at your at the comments and see see whether there's anything that can be done in that regard. But some of the other suggestions, I have a whole list of them, so we'll go back and look at those with the architect. As far as walkability goes, that hasn't changed. We said in our prior applicant, in the application that was approved, the administration of the school would make every effort to encourage walking, and we regarded it, they regarded it as a very desirable site because it is within walking distance of so many neighborhood residences and people who have young children live all around that neighborhood. And when you do the sidewalk, we'll take a look at the sidewalk. I know Central Ave is extremely wide. I know it was repaved and and reengineered within my memory fifteen years, ten years ago. So we'll look at what the sidewalks are like there. The, yeah, the light poles are only ten feet high. That was because last year, that was what we ended up as a recommend, you know, planning board recommended that height. It is true, when light poles are shorter, that you need more. I have asked that same question that you did. Do we need this many or can we manage with less? So we will ask that again, and we'll come back to you with an answer. If it's possible to do and the and the lighting will be adequate and safe, I would imagine the school would want to do it because it will save some money for them to
I'm sorry to interrupt, Marion. I just, at this point, have to check in with the rest of the planning board because it's it's about two minutes to ten, and we have this sort of rule that we check in with one another. Because sometimes it's difficult for people to go much past ten o'clock, and we have a full agenda tonight. And we haven't gotten to a number and 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 a full house, we have thirty-six participants tonight. So I just wanted to check in with the planning board. Is everybody okay going beyond ten o'clock? And how far beyond ten o'clock? Because we have a lot of, I want to get to the public tonight is my goal, but one option is we could continue this topic. We're going to have to anyway, because there's so many questions that we're going to need answers for. But that that would allow Marion some time to work and 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 bring everyone back. And then the other option is to just continue this conversation, because we have all the neighbors on and and just go go for a long time tonight.
Danny, it's scary when you say a long time. So, well, I mean, everybody's been waiting, so obviously I want to see us get to those topics that folks are waiting for. Maybe, I mean, I don't know, maybe we can continue this, because I know we have, there's some action items and I don't know, my thought is continuing this one. Because we're not voting on it tonight, anyway, it sounds like, anyway.
If you could give me five more minutes, I just want to address questions that I can address right away. I don't want to leave those, because when that happens, everybody forgets. They never look at what I file. But we have a number of questions we have to address later. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I understand that. I'm going as fast as
So we're, everyone's good with that? We give Marion five minutes, and then we're gonna really try to tackle. Okay, go for it, Marion.
Our timing, okay. Again, anything about the the arrangement of the parking lot, we'll go back to our engineer, we'll talk about it. We'll come back to you with an answer on on whether anything, any of that is, we think is feasible. And and buffers and the necessity of thirty-one spaces, again, I mean, I addressed that in the the letter responses. It is very desirable to have this many spaces because we I can't believe that anybody wants people coming to the school parking on their street. I've never seen that, so, you know. And and so, but we'll go back and look at it and see if you're only talking about a couple of spaces being reduced. So maybe there's a reasonable way to address your concern. I really liked the comments about neighborhood school and walking, too. That's exactly what the goal of this program is. Let's see, I've starred things that I thought I had to, okay. This, there's a question in the letter from the neighbors. I think we'll look at this on the site box. I'm not sure why it's an issue that the hydrant is across the street. I can see that there could be a possibility of the issue, but but we'll look at it and see if there's there could be an issue with bus stop location, because we're now having to an entrance and an exit to a school with, you know, reasonably frequent traffic during certain intervals. When there, and there's an issue, if if it's a MBTA bus, then the town and we have to go with the town to the MBTA and say, we think you need to move this stop slightly because there's an interference. If it's if it's a school bus stop, then it's a school department issue. And again, we would go with the town to the school department and say, we think you need to move this school bus stop. So they did, they also asked about a mailbox. I'm not sure what that was about, but we'll look at it on Saturday at the site walk. And I think that's very quickly. Oh, well, an important issue and one we tried to address last year, this whole issue of doing a traffic study and you know, what information can we provide? There was no recent traffic study of Central Avenue that was available. We are coming off the COVID traffic reduction. Traffic's certainly been building up. But this was, there was another application for preschool on Blue Hill Ave, which honestly is a much more dense and serious traffic issue. It's certainly, there's certainly traffic on Central Ave, and it can build up to a cer- a significant degree. But the agreement and one we're following, and it's a condition in this permit that was issued in the site plan approval, is that we will have we have trip generation statistics to show the hourly number of trips on an average school day. After six months, we'll look at that. And he- here is the way that we might choose to adjust it. It could be a decision, I don't, I think it's going to happen, but you could decide it's better to have the in where the out is and the out where the in is, or something like that. You might decide you need markers, more marking on the street, you might decide you want a sign saying no left turn. There are things, there are measures that can be taken. The town has to agree to them, and they would be taken if if there appears to be some kind of problem. Very different from what we predicted. With our strip generation statistics we've provided, we feel the flow of traffic in and out will be spread over a three-hour period, beginning and end of the day. People enroll their children for only a morning, only an afternoon. There's just a lot of variation for when people come to the school. So we believe that that the way it's set up right now is probably appropriate. And that's the end of my quick responses. I'd ask neighbors who sent the letter to look at the planning board website, because I think they're going to put our responses on the website, so you can review those. And then if you have further questions, we can talk about them in whatever way you want to, and you you know how to get in touch with me, we're all on a an email chain. I, and because of the lack of time, I'm not going to ask the engineer or the architect to speak tonight. I'm going to ask them to address the questions about engineering and architecture that did come up. And we'll prepare a memorandum to respond. And I'm hoping you're going to continue this to October twenty-eighth, and we will get back to you before then. We would really like to complete this at that time. We're going to make every effort to get every bit of information back to you that you asked for.
In that spirit, Danny, may I make one other comment, please?
Yes, please do, please do.
The town engineer submitted a letter, and I'd like to draw attention to the stormwater comment, number two, where she's suggesting additional stormwater management strategies. And I would like for the applicant to respond to that, and those are green infrastructure. So that might include green roof or rain, rain gardens on the property. So this is something I think the board's been interested in, I've certainly been interested in, and I'd like the applicant to respond to that in two weeks, okay?
Yeah, we're, we are going to, because we have to file a stormwater application. And I think she was referring to one area in front of the building where it's very close, but there's an increase in in runoff. And she had some suggestions, and those were some of the suggestions. We will respond to that, we will have to anyway. And anything else the town engineer highlighted, we will
I make a motion to continue this hearing until October twenty eighth?
Okay, I I just learned from Rich that he is not here that week. He's not here that Thursday or Friday. We had scheduled our next meeting for the twenty-eighth, so you you need you need three out of five of us, right, Marion?
Yes.
I mean, I'm willing to keep that date if if you are
We're willing to, I will, I promise that we're going to submit our information in advance of the hearing, and hopefully Rich Baylor can review it and send his questions for the meeting if he can't be there.
Makes sense.
You know, I appreciate you're telling us about that, but because of our time constraints, we really would like to complete this process. So I'd like to, I hope you'll be able to schedule it for the twenty-eighth.
Okay, all right, we will keep the twenty eighth?
Yeah, I'm I'm not, I don't want to hold up the process, I mean, if I can call in, I I will, but I I'm not sure that I will be able to.
Okay, if you're on a plane or something, what can you do? But, all right, so let's keep it, okay. Kathleen, were you ready to make a motion?
I did make a motion to continue this hearing until October twenty-eighth. Don't we have enough time?
Let's say, let's say seven twenty.
Okay, at seven twenty.
Okay, anyone want to second the motion?
I can, Rich just did.
Okay, all in favor, Meredith?
Yes.
Cheryl Taggias?
Yes.
Rich Wheeler?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Danny Swenson, yes? Okay, thank you. I'm I'm sorry we couldn't get to everything tonight, I know. I I know we have a a lot of people on the line who are very interested, and I know you've had a lot of experts with you, Marion, that we didn't have time for. But we, I I I feel we did get a lot done tonight. And I look forward to learning more on the site walk and and to hopefully addressing any remaining issues on the twenty-eighth. It's, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the time and the fact that our engineer and architect were here is important, because they were able to hear your comments. I think that's much better than my trying to report them back, so, anyway, thank you. I know you spent a lot of time on this, thank you.
Well, thank you for coming, and I'm sorry we didn't get to hear your lovely voices. Look forward to hearing them soon. Good night now.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
I'm not leaving.
Okay, oh, you stay put, okay. Okay, I just wanted to quickly check, because we have two ANRs and the Wentworth Farm. And I didn't know, if the attendees could let me know if they're here for the A and R approval not required, four thirty-two And I didn't know i- if the attendees could let me know if they're here for the A and R approval not required, four thirty-two Adams Street, thirty-seven Walnut Street. If not, I would put them after because we still have, okay, I, I seen Corcoran has his hand up. He may be here for one of those. Hello, Mr. Corcoran. You may unmute. Mr. Corcoran, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. Are you here for one of the approval not requires, four thirty-two Adams? Oh, you are, okay.
Walnut Street.
Okay, all right. And, and are you, you're also here for the memory clinic? Would you mind if we heard this after the memory clinic? You, you don't mind? Okay. I very much appreciate that. Okay, and for, is anyone here for four thirty-two? Adams Street.
Denny, we're going to have to push four thirty-two Adams Street. This is for folks' information. This is the, the eventual subdivision of the St. Agath's property for the East Walton Fire Station. We're not ready to do this just yet, so we'll have to do this on a future agenda.
Okay, that's actually good news for me. Only because we're, it's ten-ten. Wentworth Farm, uh, release of covenant lot seven. Is anyone here for that topic? I'm guessing Marion?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Is that your only topic for the remainder of the night?
Yeah, if you make it to the zoning articles, I might listen in, but that's all I want to speak on. Thank you.
Okay, so I will let you go then. I will let you do your presentation on the Wentworth Farm release of covenant lot seven.
Okay, so Wentworth Farm, instead of providing secu- other forms of security when this development began, agreed to place restrictions on certain lots to guarantee that the infrastructure, roadway, drainage and so forth were, was going to be completed properly. And as they've proceeded through the project, they've asked for release of restrictions on lots one of two and a substitution of a restriction on lot seven. So currently there's one covenant, restrictive covenant on record for this development, and that's for lot seven. So the developer now has come back and asked to release that covenant. But before doing that, he's been meeting with the DPW director and determined what the appropriate estimate is of the cost of any remaining work, which consists of final pavement coating on the street. And there's, there's one street light to be put on a post close to the stream. And so that's all contained in the estimate and you received that estimate. For it now, you also received a copy of the restricted covenant. You could see what it looks like. And then finally, I prepared first part of an application for release of lots under covenant. And if the planning board agrees to this release, you can authorize the town planner to sign it and then I have to record it and I'll return the recording information to the planning board.
Okay, thank you. So, so the amount was determined by the DPW and the town engineer. And we've already done one of these releases before. I feel, so I'm pretty confident that this, this worked out. But did anyone else have any other questions? Okay.
I should mention just as well that I do have the check, the deposit check. I believe I have to deliver it to DPW, but I sent a letter today to Tim Truwinski, to you, you know, to the planning board with a copy. It's so that you know in good faith that we are going to provide that deposit if you agree to releasing this.
Well, I'm concerned about that because we've had a situation a few meetings ago where somebody was like, well, I don't know what happened with that check. And it went someplace and maybe it got stuck in a box somewhere.
Oh, no, that was a whole different issue. That was Bill Clark, right?
I don't know who it was, but all I'm saying is that, you know, I don't know that giving it to the DPW is the thing I would do. You know, I just would want to make sure that somebody, you know, follows up and makes sure that it gets into the right spot. Because there's no point in, in getting a check that then sits in a box for six months and everybody knows it's not good anymore. So, you know.
Remember that.
So, I mean, I didn't, I, I actually had to ask Tim Truwinski and I don't know whether we figured it out, but there, there, the question is, how do you handle this? The DPW takes such deposits for installation of pipes, water pipes and so forth. So they must have a procedure. The only reason I mentioned the check is I want you to know that I actually have a check. I'm not just promising to get it. I have it, but I haven't figured out what to do with it yet.
You know, I just, I just don't want to be in the situation where we've got a check that isn't any good and, or, or nobody can find it. So, you know.
They deposited and hold it in an account. That's what I need to find out. That would make more sense.
Kathleen, I'm glad you brought that up. What went wrong with that check was we didn't have a contract or an agreement that went with the check. So we had a check and we had a verbal discussion that didn't get recorded. Random, randomly cable access didn't record us that night. So we had an agreement, a verbal agreement, but fortunately, there was no contract. There was no, there was, we had a check, but without a contract. So, but this I would think, and I'm, I'm sure Tim Truwinski won't accept the check or will immediately return it if we don't have the proper paperwork.
Okay, all right. Just, you know, just trying to say, you know, as a real estate lawyer, we're, we're into this all the time. Checks aren't good, so yeah.
Very valid point. I didn't know what we should do with it. But I think what we want to make sure is that that the deposit is good if it takes six months or a year or whatever it is to complete this. And how do we ensure that? And I would suggest that it would be, they should have an account that they would hold these deposits in because they get them for other types of work. So I will look into that and I will certainly send information back to the planning board as to how it's going to be handled. You have any concerns, I may will send it to Tim Truwinski. I'm sure he'll be consulting you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I will entertain a motion. I'm assuming that we need to vote on approval of the release of the covenant for lot seven for Wentworth Farm. And the creation of a, of a monetary bond.
We would have a motion to release the covenant on lot seven in return for the deposit of a sum of money with the DPW replacing that surety for the covenant on the lot.
And Cheryl seconded. All in favor? Rich Beeler? Go to Meredith Hall?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Rich Beeler is a guest. Cheryl Taggias?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Danny Swenson, yes. Okay, well, good night, Ms. McCadtrick.
Can, can we really quick?
We have to amend that motion to authorize Tim Zizinski to sign the covenant release.
Yes. And Tim, did you want to add something?
That was perfect.
Oh, good job. Oh, my goodness. Thank you. Okay.
We all have to vote on that?
There's a vote on that amendment.
Okay. Okay, Kathleen motion. Okay, Cheryl Taggias?
Yes.
Meredith Hall?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Danny Swenson, yes. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. McCadtrick.
Thank you very much.
Okay, have a good night.
Have a lovely evening.
And we may hear from you on, on the zoning articles. Okay.
I'm going to check back in. You have a few other things for us though, right?
Actually, actually, I was hoping we could go into the winter articles, memory clinic.
No, could we just do the A and R plan?
You want to just get it over?
Yes, please.
All right, that's important to you. I thought we could let the people go and do that one last.
No, that's the shortest one. We could just let them go.
All right, all right, let's do it. Okay, Mr. Corcoran, did you, are you, you're welcome to speak on the thirty-seven Walnut Street, approval not required.
Thank you. This is, I think, a very simple and straightforward approval on A and R plan. The zoning board of appeals granted a variance on September ninth, authorizing the division of the lot at thirty-seven Walnut Street into two lots. One, I, there was a prior division of forty-nine Walnut Street into two lots, one being for what became forty-nine and one became thirty-seven. Thirty-seven was given an odd pork chop shape with a narrow twenty-five foot piece spreading behind forty-nine. Purpose was to avoid a variance and to balance the, the square footage of both lots. What ended up happening is that the, that the portion of the property that is behind forty-nine became unusable by the owner of forty-nine, excuse me, of thirty-seven. And really usable by the owner of forty-nine. Those parties have reached an agreement to purchase and sell that narrow rectangle known as lot two on this plan from thirty-seven to forty-nine. Board of Appeals granted a variance to full support of other abutters. And we're asking this board to simply authorize endorsement of the A and R so that we can conduct a closing and record the, record the plan.
And the plan would have the, this, the stamps on the plan will say non-buildable lot, right? Because it's just a little piece of a lot.
It is, it is itself not buildable. It is being, it will be combined with forty-nine Walnut Street and create a new single lot, a combination of two lots comprising one property.
Okay, do we have a quick visual of that lot?
I can share a screen with you if I can have the ability to do that or I can.
Yeah. Yeah.
We had the A and R plan in the.
There it is.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, I just shared my screen. I had it up.
Thank you.
So forty-nine, it used to be all of this rectangle. This property sits right behind the First Congregational Church in Town Hall. To the Town Fire Station. This originally was divided to create lot, this property and this property. And they did it by a special permit without by creating two lots that were each at least sixteen thousand square feet in size. Effectively, this lot two on this plan became sort of landlocked almost. It's not usable by the owner of thirty-seven here. And really should be combined with this with forty-nine into a single lot. And that's the plan going forward. We did file, seek a variance from the Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals granted that variance. There was support from other abutters at, in the variance hearing. Variance was dated September ninth. The appeal period on that variance has run and no appeals associated with the granting of that variance. So we're now scheduling a closing for the sale of this lot, which is labeled as an unbuildable lot from the owner of thirty-one, which is Michelle Wong, to the owners of lot two, who are Matt and Eric and Aaron Carrick.
Okay.
Question, Denny?
Yes.
This isn't the first time we've seen something like this where there's an original oddly shaped subdivision of property and it's oddly shaped so that they can meet the requirements to subdivide. And then sometime later it comes back and there's a variance and it does this. And it, it, it just seems like an odd process to me. Why do we approve these odd shaped lots? Are we required to, Tim or Ned? Like to allow this kind of really weird pork chop site? Because it seems to me it's a way of subdividing property that may or may not have, really should have gone for a variance to start with. Not later, you know?
I, I, I agree, it probably should have gone for variance in, in the first place. But the zoning does allow, as long as you have adequate frontage. It does allow two lots that comprise less than forty thousand square feet. Single lot that comprises less than forty thousand square feet in the residence B zone, which this is, to be divided into two lots that are at least sixteen thousand square feet. And that can be done by special permit, which is what was done in the early two thousands with the Board of Appeals.
But to have this kind of narrow shape behind somebody else's property, there's nothing, no provision for, for that in our current zoning?
The real issue deals with whether this piece here could serve as frontage for a pork chop lot that would come back into the rear. That's.
It's just not practical, that's all. I mean, I, I'm not, I don't have any opposition to this tonight. But I just brought it up because it's not the first time I've seen this and I think the board, we should think about this in the future.
Because it's a crazy, it's a crazy outcome.
Exactly. It's not the first time I've seen this.
Incidentally, on the twenty-eighth, we'll, we'll see an A and R that is going to create a situation like this. And you are right, there is, there's really, there's nothing. There are other towns that have kind of lot shape regulations. And we can, if the board is interested, we can kind of take up some of those precedents. I was actually in a conversation with someone about that today. But you know, when, when it comes to these approvals not required, you know, plans, what the board is doing is determining that the, 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 the project does not constitute a subdivision. And if it's got frontage on it, on an existing way that meets the zoning requirements, then so I, I, I think it is worthwhile to think about. Do we want to talk about all kind of lot shape regulations which other towns have? But in the meantime, here we are.
Right, and I don't want to, you know, derail us here tonight. But I did want to bring it up. I'm glad that you mentioned that you are thinking about that, Tim. And I would like to see what other towns are doing with it.
Thank you, Cheryl. I think it's an excellent point. I was wondering the same thing because I've seen it too. And it does seem like a workaround.
Right.
And it seems like it's taking up both the zoning board's time and our time and I don't even know, but I think.
In any event, I have a motion to approve the A and R plan and authorize the execution of the plan by our town planner, Tim Zizinski.
Second. Okay, and I just wanted to add because we have shown that it has frontage and it has on a, an existing road with infrastructure. So, okay, all in favor, Cheryl Taggias?
Yes.
Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Meredith Hall?
Yes.
Danny Swenson, yes. Okay, all right. Okay, so we have winter articles. So, memory clinic. Here we are. So, Mr. Corcoran, would you like to tell us anything new on this plan or share any updates with us?
Yes, I would. And I appreciate the opportunity. I think a couple of things. I did get an email from Tim. Boarding an email that was sent to you from L.L. Wells that had requested that we wrap the entire outline of the building on the site in yellow tape. We had previously agreed with Mr. Doug Henry and his client that we would wrap the portion of the building that's closest to the Bacardi property. And exchange for the ability to go on to the Bacardi property and, and survey the mature trees on her property as well as the location of her dwelling relative to the property line. We had a meeting with the neighbors last evening. We said that we were concerned about wrapping the rest of the building because most of that wrapping would be invisible from the street. But we said that we would agree to do it if the planning board thought it was a good idea in conjunction with a sidewalk that the planning board would seek to have and was certainly willing to do that. Our concern is that if we just put yellow tape around the outline of a building that's not really visible, that it would attract folks onto the site who ought not to be there without supervision. So we're happy to do that and we think that obviously could be helpful in informing the board about the layout of the proposed building.
Well, I, I would like to see, I, I would like to see that marking on a sidewalk. Because when, on the last sidewalk, it was very confusing because the stakes. We really need the yellow tape to kind of draw the whole thing out because the building is a unique shape and, and it was get, it was very confusing without the ribbon.
You and I were walking together and it was hard to, to, to figure out where we were headed. And we're, and we're willing to do that, but we, but because most of it would be invisible from outside of the property. We think it's appropriate to do it in conjunction with a sidewalk rather than put out yellow tape and then that sort of invite others onto the property who ought not. onto the property who ought not to be there, uh, if they're not, uh, you know, they're not invited. So that's, that was the only concern that we have, that it would be sort of an attractive nuisance, if you would, attracting folks onto the site. But we're happy to do it.
That would be great. I would like to understand the footprint of the building, but also the relationship to the building and the paved areas. I, when I, on the next sidewalk, I really want to be able to picture everywhere that's going to change. So, and, and if you, if on the sidewalk you could point, and here's, here's where the, you know, construction materials and entry and exit for the vehicles and so forth, so I could sort of understand the tree removal and so forth. Go ahead, Mr. Guys.
I'd like to request that, um, the twenty-foot, um, distance from the property line be marked because that's what's being suggested for a setback from that property line, um, next to the Bacardi property. So, um, if we could see where the twenty feet is rather than just where the building is. So if we go to, that, um, I think it's, uh, the zoning itself, Section Five Open Space. It says, "Open space, um, shall include area that is either left as natural state or landscaped in accordance with an approved landscape plan and that is not less than twenty feet." So it was changed from forty to twenty. So it would be good to have twenty marked and forty marked so we can see what that looks like. Okay?
I'm happy to do that. The forty feet was the language that was in the bylaw that was associated with the proposed assisted living off of Randolph Avenue. It was a different site as it laid out. We, we think that, uh, twenty feet is the most that we can commit to in the course of this zoning. Uh, and we'll look for, continue to look for opportunities to expand that. But if we do have, uh, I did submit to Tim today, uh, the latest version of a proposed site plan. If Tim can bring that up or if you can share a screen with me, I can, um, show that those latest modifications and where that twenty-foot setback would be. And then we, we're happy to stake it and, and, um, and mark it.
Ned, you should, Ned, you should be able to share your screen.
Okay. Let's see. Not sure where I can do it at the moment. I'm not a panelist, so I'm not sure that I have the...
Okay, give me a second.
Danny, question while we're waiting?
Yes, please do.
Mr. Corcoran said that there was a survey being done, which was locating the trees. Did, I'm sorry if I missed it, but did, uh, Mr. Corcoran, did you say whether that was, uh, one that would be complete?
The survey, uh, activity was done last Thursday. I don't know when the, um, the updated survey plan will be available. I'm assuming within the next week or so, and I can, I will check on that tomorrow. Can you all see this plan?
Yes.
On the screen? Okay.
We'll be able to zoom in.
Sorry, my dog is having quite a night. And well, so it, I'll outline it here. It's, it is obviously relatively small on the screen. If that Zoom feature can work on that, because it's not mine.
That's better.
Great. So the latest plan, we've done a couple of things. We've sort of splayed this arm and this arm by a few extra feet in distance from this portion of the property line. So let's back up. This is the property line with Karen Bacardi.
So, so, so Ned, I'm gonna, I'm gonna promote you to panelist because, um, my screen is sharing and no one can see where you're pointing. So it's going to wind up being better for you to share your screen. So just give me half a second to give you...
There I am.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. Okay. Is that fairly clear, everybody?
Yeah, I can see it.
Okay.
Zoom in though, please. There's a arrow, there's a plus.
I think you can do it with Control+Plus.
Plus at the top. Or plus at the top. You see that plus symbol?
Now I gotta bring this down. Okay. All right. So this is a closer up of the portion, most of the building as it sits in relation to the Bacardi residence. We're particularly concerned about this area and the interplay between the Bacardi property and the building. There are healthy setbacks because of wetlands from Highland Street, from, uh, and from the Winter Valley property on both the plant side left and the plant side bottom. So this is the property line between the, this, uh, the hospital property and the Bacardi's. We got an agreement with, um, Ms. Bacardi's attorney three weeks ago to go out and survey the significant trees on her side of the property line as well as on our side of the property line. And to survey the location of her house relative to the distance from the house to the property. That survey work that was done in the field a week ago today, it was last Thursday. And we expect that the, that the survey plan that will demarcate those trees and that, and that additional information will be available to us within the next week. And we'll certainly, uh, hope to be able to share it with the board by the meeting on the twenty-eighth. We've done a couple of things in sort of design side. Is that we've relocated some proposed rooms on these two edges of the building to other places. And we've been able to pull this side a little bit back further from here. This, this point to this point on the last plan was fifty-six feet. It's now sixty-two feet. We've, um, this, these points have remained fairly constant. I think this, this is seventy-two feet from this corner to here. I think it was seventy-one feet previously. And so there's a retaining wall. This is a two-story portion of the prop, of the building that is lowered, that, that, there's a lot of cut here, a lot of material removed. And it sits down below the level of this, uh, of this, uh, land that's up above. There's a retaining wall that's shown in this red mark. There is a emergency egress footpath with, with green pavers around this building. And then there's a, we need to create some sort of slope modification through here to manage the flow of stormwater that comes from the Bacardi property onto this property during fairly heavy rain events. If you observe the Conservation Commission meeting, um, a few weeks ago, you would have seen a video showing, um, that was taken by one of the neighbors showing water flowing onto the site from the Bacardi property during a heavy rainstorm. So we know we have to manage that flow. And so that, we need to make sure that that happens here. This hashed line here is the twenty-foot setback or what we would call that no disturb, um, buffer that would be consistent of existing vegetation and perhaps new landscaping features that would come in along here. The closest that we can make that comfortably at the choke point, the closest point between the building and the property line, is right here. So we know that twenty feet is what we can manage at this point. As, as the building moves away from the property line, we know that we can widen that out, particularly as we get closer to the, to her dwelling. And we think with some additional modifications, we might be able to do more. But we don't know that we can do that. And the most that we can commit to today in the zoning is twenty feet. And some of the questions will be, as we, as we look forward to working with Ms. Bacardi and her advisors on, um, on landscape features, is what type of infill should, should go here? We know that the trees on both sides of the property are very mature. The canopy is very tall. There's not a lot of undergrowth. And so you, standing in her driveway or standing on her property, you really look into the property underneath that, that actual canopy. And so our anticipation is that we're going to need to do some level of other, um, plantings, arborvitae's and other things, whether on her property or somewhere along this line to visually, to, to assist in buffering the view into the property. The question being, as we do that, what effect does planting of new arborvitae's have on root systems for existing mature trees? So it's going to be a very painstaking, detailed process of designing the right combination of features. But we do want to acknowledge the need for at least twenty feet at this point, certainly larger, much wider as you approach this point, to manage a combination of preservation of existing and infill with other features. So we're, I think we would be happy to, um, stake this twenty-foot line and tape it so that on a sidewalk, everybody gets a sense of where that, where that twenty feet nets out.
Yes, please. Go ahead.
So you were planning to stake the building corners, is that right?
Right.
And what about staking the retaining wall and the swale? Because the retaining wall has a fence also, and then it has, um, what is that, like a riprap stone? No, it's a grass paved, grass paved wall. Right. So, you know, you've got the... And is that grass paved walk necessary or can it be part of the grass? Because you have emergency egress, I understand, is on the other side of that retaining wall next to the buildings, right? That's how you're getting out of those buildings for the second means of egress, probably?
We need a, we need an egress from this upper level terrace out this way because we can't come around this way.
And why is it that you can't come around the other way?
Because it's too tight to the, there's a big grade change here that doesn't exist here. It's something we'll continue to look at, but right now it's what we think is the most efficient way, given the grades.
So I guess I'd, I'd look at whether you can go through the building then as your second means out of the terrace. It's just, it's a lot of, you know, walkway just for that terrace exit. If there's another way to do it, it just increases the potential for the buffer. Just trying to think of any way to increase the potential for the buffer. And then, um, so if you could think about that...
We can think about that and we can certainly talk to the fire chief about that.
Okay. So the other thing I was, just a thought I had about the zoning is, uh, is whether we can come up with, um, some kind of language that, you know, an average setback, um, that's more than twenty feet, but a minimum of twenty feet so that we know that we can get some more than twenty feet in some areas. So maybe that's something.
Happy to think about that. Because we're, we are, we're, we are thinking about, you know, how this, this, in reality, this line would curve into the site to expand this area. Right? And so perhaps we can come up with it, with it, with, with an average, um, minimum of twenty. And, you know, if you come to here, you're probably at fifty.
Yeah, so if you said within the, the no disturbance zone, the non-disturbance zone, so you're not using the parts that are top and bottom to what we see, right? And then, and then you came up with the, something of an average from that area.
Right. Okay.
And then you think about that walk. You know, maybe we can get the minimum from twenty to twenty-five and an average up to thirty. And that, you know, that, that ten feet could make a difference, right?
Right.
And it'll be especially important to understand where any existing trees are within that twenty or thirty feet.
Right. No, that's, we know that that's important.
Yeah. All right. Well, I, I am looking forward to seeing the site one, as soon as you get it marked. I, I am very interested to getting on the site so I can better understand this. But I, I, the, the setback is very small. And, and generally speaking, we don't look at the trees on the abutters property as part of the buffer that we, yeah, we, I, I, I understand you're trying to work with that neighbor and I...
We understand that, Danny. It's, it's clearly all on our site. We just think it's helpful to know where the full canopy is.
Yeah. No, and you're working with the root systems and traffic, right? Okay. All right. All right. Um, okay. So I'm eager to hear from the public who's been waiting all night. We have a full house, twenty-four people on tonight. So, um, is it okay with the planning board if we go right to the public? Okay. And then we'll hear from the, from the planning board afterward. Okay.
Yeah, I want to hear, um, just, Danny, if we could at some point, um, just talk about the schedule for the articles, you know, like what the opening and closing of the warrant is, just so we understand what everybody's working with in terms of timeframe. Thank you.
Yep. I think that's a good idea. Okay.
And it's, um, fifteen minutes of eleven. I have a closing in Worcester at eight o'clock, eight-thirty in the morning. So I'd really like to...
Okay. All right.
Not go past eleven.
Okay. Well, fifteen minutes. Mr. Henry, um, please join us. Please unmute. Can we bring Mr. Henry in? Should we take down the visual or would Mr. Henry like to leave it up? You're welcome to join us, Mr. Henry. Tim, Tim, are you able to bring him into the panelists? Okay. Hello?
Do you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, welcome.
So, um, I made a number of the points I'm going to raise tonight back in July when I submitted a letter to the planning board. But I just would like to go through a few things tonight, which I think are important. First of all, my understanding was that the intent of the planning board was to make this article really tailored in some way to this site and not to be a townwide ordinance. And I think that the way the last, this draft has come out, it actually moves in the opposite direction. Because as currently drafted, it, it doesn't tie it to this site and it could apply to any site throughout the town. And there's really nothing to differentiate it from any other residence area in the town. And, you know, as currently drafted, my client's property, which is more than a hundred and fifty thousand square feet, would qualify for this special permit district. Which I don't think is the intent of the board to let everyone in town have a right to have an assisted living facility if they have more than a three-point-five acre lot. So that's one point. The initial draft that came out back in, I think it was initially in June, and it was in some of the later drafts, had a three-hundred-foot frontage requirement. And that's been eliminated in this draft. There's no frontage requirement here. And we like, actually like frontage reinserted into this draft and also would suggest that it be more than three-hundred feet. We think four-hundred feet is the right number for this site. And that would also bring all the hospital property as a requirement because four-hundred feet would include all of their lots out there. I think the lot size of a hundred fifty thousand square feet should also be expanded because, as I said, anyone in town with three-point-four acres of land could do an assisted living development or seek a special permit the way it's currently drafted. The original draft had a reference to a lot lot in common with a Residence D-one district, which I think there's only two in town, and that was taken out. And that would tie it more to a specific site as opposed to a townwide ordinance. The original draft also had some language that said that the height of the building closest to my client's property would not be a... closest to my client's property would not be taller than 20 feet. And that was a 35 foot high requirement. The developers last night in briefing the neighbors on their plan, said that the plan was to basically have the first level of this sunken so that only one story would be seen from my client's property as opposed to two stories. And if that is the case, I think that should be memorialized in the zoning and not to something that is a aspiration. I think there should be language in there that only one story would be visible from a neighboring residence, single family residence lot. And the next point is on setbacks. The current draft that Ned put forward has 150 foot front yard setback, 100 foot rear yard and a 50 foot sideline. And that's really because it's a tight site, but it seems to me that a single family homeowner in a residence district should have a, at least the same setback that Winter Valley has of 100 feet from the properties. I think that should be expanded from 50 to 100 would be our suggestion. And we also think that a 20 foot no disturb zone is, is pretty scant. But that should be, you know, if we're going to have 100 foot setback, we'd want at least 50 of that to be a no disturbed zone. That would be our preference, as in a butter. And the other two things are, as, as Ned mentioned, there, there is a lot of water on this site. Georgia Lee actually took the video that was shown to the conservation commission, which showed more than six inches of water right in the area where that 20 foot setback is during a big storm. And so there's a lot of flooding on this site. And there's also potential flooding with the expansion of Winter Valley and the close by 40 B project. So we think that this bylaw should, in addition to requiring any project to meet state and Milton stormwater, but also should look at flooding as a, an issue for the site. And the final point is that some of this property is not buildable. Once this was put up, for example, the area that is on the bottom of the screen beneath my client's property is sort of an L because of the wetlands, you can't really do anything there. And there's other areas where, on the other side of the parking lot, you can't put the list there because of the wetland crossings. And so we would prefer that the bylaw have some language that would allow the planning board to require potentially certain areas of the lot to be put in a conservation restriction or something like a conservation restriction to prevent future development. So for example, that L-shaped piece couldn't be used by the hospital, but it could be used, for example, by Winter Valley. And so we wouldn't like to have a memory care unit on one side and have an expansion of Winter Valley if that was rezoned to be part of the residence D district. So we'd like to have, the planning board should have the flexibility to look at any site. And if this land is not buildable because of wetlands, to require that to be maintained as permanent open space and undisturbed going forward. So those are my points and we look forward to hopefully getting some of those into the next draft.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Henry. I tend to agree with you.
I do not.
We do need to, I, I know, I know you probably feel differently. I know we do need to make sure this can apply to more than.
More than one place.
Right. I agree with you. But I, but I also agree with Mr. Henry. We don't want it to apply to any single family house lot in town because that's.
I agree with that too, but I said, I just want to make it clear that I don't want to see zoning that is just for one parcel.
Agreed, agreed. Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Henry. And because it's getting late and Kathleen has to leave and be somewhere at 8:00 in the morning, let's move to our next participant. Deborah Felton, and I've already done my disclosure that I'm a member of the Fuller Village Board. And Deborah Felton is a executive director at the Fuller Village. Please unmute. And I'm just doing a 23B3 disclosure. Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you. I'm trying not to be too long. I really want to thank everybody for their kind words about Marvin Gordon. What everybody said was very touching. And I just want you to know that two weeks ago, when Marvin chaired an executive committee meeting, we discussed in depth the proposed memory care unit. And it is something that Fuller Village would really welcome to the community. I have a long testimony. I really don't want to read it at this late hour. So I'll send it to Tim to distribute to you. But I just want to say that, you know, this is a zoning issue right now. And any site planning and buffers would, I think it's my understanding would be when the project is actually before you, after town meeting passes the zoning. I just want to, you know, we have these issues all the time. People move in healthy and then have memory issues. And it is really sad when people have to leave Milton. As I know, you've received a letter from one of my residents. But I want to end with, listen, I had a couple who lived at Fuller. The wife had to go to memory care. The husband was legally blind. And he walked out to Route 138 every day to get on this little shuttle bus that the MBTA runs to go to Canton Center to see his wife. Each day he'd take the bus and take it back, get dropped off on Route 138 and then take his life in his hands to cross 138 to come back into our property. And, you know, his devotion was admirable, but every time he crossed that street, it was incredibly scary. It would have been so great for me to be able to say to the family that, you know, you don't have to leave town and that there is a memory care unit that is, you know, run by a developer, a local company, not a developer who just built something and then left town. And that there is going to be lots of support provided to the community, not just for the residents who are living there, but educational opportunities for other residents in the area who face this very devastating issue. So thank you very much for your time and thank you all for your, you know, volunteer service. It's very late.
And thank you for staying through all of our other topics and, and joining us at such a late hour. You, you know, as someone who does a lot of service for the town, we are all working so hard and we all want to accomplish so much every meeting. So thank you for your, your thoughtful words and your participation. Have a great night, Deborah. Okay, Mr. Irwin, would you like to join us tonight? You can unmute. Are we able to bring him in as a panelist?
Hi, this is Gene Irwin. Can you hear me?
Yes, and, and I forgot to get Deborah's address, but I will find it tomorrow. But Mr. Irwin, could you tell us your address?
Yes, 120 Highland Street.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And, and I'll be brief because of the late hour. Again, almost like Doug Henry, I want to go back to the summer. I think it was the very first planning board meeting we had. And I brought up the infrastructure and by that I meant the roads leading in there. And I found it very curious that Ned Corcoran last night said that the development is now going to have a 22 foot wide access road going in. However, Highland Street itself is only 21 feet. And it has, you know, the last traffic count before COVID years ago was 13,000 vehicles a day. Again, I just don't think the road is adequate. And Cheryl Taggaya has brought up the point. When I said, you know, if, God forbid, something ever happened at a memory clinic there, a fire engine coming from, by the police station headed down the street, he cannot make that turn. Now, the NFPA, the National Fire Stand, is saying the turn has to be makeable by the largest piece of equipment the fire department has. And obviously, when we talk about that little access road between Bacardi's and the memory clinic, it says the chief are the, can eliminate that road if the building has an adequate sprinkler system. While in this day and age, I think every memory clinic should have an, you know, a fantastic sprinkler system. But they don't work for everything. And, you know, if there was a chemical leak there or smoke, stuff like that, it doesn't work. And the fire department really should have access around the whole building. But getting back to the fire engine coming up the street by the police station, the, the code says that turn into that private lane there has to be a minimum 25 feet inside diameter. And a maximum, and not less than a maximum outside diameter of 50 feet. And right now, a fire, and, and the code also says that a fire, a piece of fire equipment can't use the opposing lane as part of its access. And so there's just no way, a, a ladder truck, by the way, a typical ladder truck is 10 feet wide and 40 feet long, a typical ladder truck, and about 60 tons. So if any piece of equipment tries to pull in that lane, one, the road there, they're not talking about a bridge. I haven't seen any photographs of a bridge, but they need a bridge. And the culvert that's there is about 50 years old and it's cement. And that's about the useful life of a culvert is 50 years. And if you notice down off of Ford Ranch Road, that development there, Todd Hamilton's. A fire truck can make the turn over that bridge only because that road is 30 feet wide. And he's coming from the opposite direction. He's coming from the far side. Right now, a fire truck coming by the Milton Hospital would not only have to be in the next lane, I believe it'd have to be on the sidewalk to try to make that corner. And Mr. Taggaya is back in, oh, I want to say August, asked Ned to, you know, bring in some sort of diagram showing how any piece of equipment can make that turn. And under the section 18 of 527 CMR, section 1, it says, "Fire apparatus access road plans must include an analysis and elevation of a fire apparatus maneuvers throughout the access roads created by a swept path analysis and turn simulation software." I think that's absolutely required before we do anything else because there's no point in further designing this building if the fire department can't legally get to it. So, or as I say, you know, the applicants might want to try to revisit accessing the property through Winter Valley. But that's all I'd say is that this swept path analysis should be, and with the simulation software. This should be, I think, the next thing on our list because the earlier callers during the public speaking part of the, what do you call that? The citizen speak.
Citizen speak, yes.
Talking about a wasted time and how everything's backed up. My neighborhood would love to see the hospital, get a memory clinic somewhere. We just don't think this is the site. One of my neighbors has been a volunteer at the hospital for many decades. And I say the, a, a lot of my neighbors work at the hospital, that sort of thing. We have nothing against a memory clinic. We all think and would support the hospital doing one, a memory clinic on their own campus, doing it up at Pepsi-Cola, do it in the back of Cunningham Park where the hospital already owns land. But there's just too many problems associated with this site in our opinion. And that's all I have to say for tonight. Thank you.
And, and thank you, Mr. Irwin. I, I just wanted to clarify, you're saying that it's not only the entryway, it's that Highland Avenue is too narrow for.
Yes.
Okay.
The NFPA, I think as of at least 2015, it says fire departments cannot use any opposing traffic lane at all. Now, if you just pitch it, you know, God forbid there was ever a fire at the memory clinic at the site. The, the, even the road going in isn't wide enough. Besides a fire truck being 10 feet wide, fire department, firemen will tell you, they need eight feet in either direction of the fire truck to work, to want, you know, pull off their hoses, hook up the hoses, all that sort of thing. And then when they have to extend the ladder over the building, they use what they call outriggers. These big arms that come out of the side of the fire truck to keep it from tipping over when the ladder's extended off to the side. And the, so I say, this, you know, you go back to Todd Hamilton's property. Everyone on the planning board said, you know, there should be sidewalks. There's no sidewalks associated with this thing with far more people. You're talking 70 some odd residents, another 85 employees. It's ridiculous that you're going to expect during a fire and everyone has to evacuate the building or a smoke event or a chemical event. All these people in the driveway and ambulances and fire equipment supposed to get down this road while other people are trying to get out. It, it, it's totally unworkable at 22 feet and without sidewalks. And, you know, the hospital needs sidewalks and I, I get the memory clinic idea. I had, I was mowing my lawn the other day and I had a woman standing in the front, in front of my driveway waving to me. I stopped the mower, walked over, she was about 80 years old. And the hospital had released her onto Highland Street. She was looking for a bus. Make a long story short, I drove her home to Randolph, almost to the Holbrook line. This is not the right place for a memory clinic. And I say the site is not workable. You know, there's, they're talking about like, what, about 1,500 feet of retaining walls. Everywhere you look at this thing, there's water, you know, ponds here, pond there. What, what do they call those gardens?
Rainwater, yeah.
Rainwater garden, all this stuff. It's, it's crazy. But I say we sup, our neighborhood would absolutely support a memory clinic anywhere in town that's workable. And love to see the memory clinic succeed. It's just we don't agree this is the right site. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, I would just point out that we met with the fire chief and it was his request that the fire line be 22 feet wide.
Okay, but the thing is, this is not within his jurisdiction. This is NFPA. It's, it's beyond his jurisdiction. This is the minimum requirements is a 25 foot inside diameter and a 50 foot outside diameter. And it just doesn't work. And it's, it's, it's not, I say, under his discretion. So we'd like to see the analysis, the fire analysis. Which is part of the NFPA, you know, recommendation, which is used not just in Massachusetts, but worldwide.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Irwin. Let's see, is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak on this topic, the memory clinic this evening? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands raised. Okay. All right, then I open it to the planning board. See, the planning board. Does anyone want to comment on this tonight? I'm ready to continue it to our next meeting.
Understand the schedule, Danny, because maybe what we could do is outline. I mean, it would be good to have time for us to discuss the comments, to discuss the language we voted at our last meeting, I think, to move this forward as a planning board article. So it's important for us to run through all of the provisions. You know how it's very detail oriented and it can be time consuming. But it's important to do. So I, I, maybe Tim has an idea of when we would have to submit the article?
There is no schedule yet. There's no, they, they haven't technically voted yet to have a Winter Town meeting. I think obviously they intend to, but until that date is locked in, it's tough to kind of back into.
All right. So then we know we have a meeting on the 28th. We know, we just said we're going to have meetings on the 9th and the 23rd. We know the 28th is going to have a, probably still a fair amount of time committed to 193 Central Ave.
And 114.
And 440.
And 440, right. So I guess what I would ask is that I noticed some of the things that Mr. Henry noticed that had been taken out of the prior draft, like the draft that I had last worked on. There was no explanation of why those things were taken out. So at least can we get some explanation from Mr. Corcoran at the next meeting about why he removed those provisions? And in the meantime, we're going to have a site walk. We'll have a better understanding of what we think about setbacks. And then if we, if we think about making the 9th a, where we set aside a good chunk of time to go through this, at least we'll have more information. And we'll have more time hopefully available on the agenda. My suggestion.
I know, I think it's a good suggestion, I just don't know what else is going to happen on the 9th, you know, but happy to, you know, I'm happy to put it on both of those times and try to accomplish what we can. But here we are.
I know, because it's not lasting past 11, right?
Yeah, these are tough, these are tough, it's really big, important projects that we're all working on here, and
And we haven't even talked about the accessory dwelling unit one of them tonight, so.
No, I know, I know. Okay, well, we'll just carry on.
I will say that I did read the draft, Kathleen, and thank you for preparing it. Would you just, can you, just, Dani, can I have like two minutes to ask Kathleen a question about it, just for
Do we want to move, do we want to move the memory clinic to the next meeting? Okay, I okay, so does anybody want to make
I don't think it's a public hearing yet, so we'll have a motion on it.
Okay, all right, we don't need to, okay, so we can just thank the citizens.
Does the board, does the board want to try to schedule a sitewalk?
Yes. When would you, when would you have it all marked?
I think the earliest would be for next weekend.
Okay.
Or we could do it the weekend after.
All right, I could do, so so the 23rd or the 30th, I could do either.
I can't do the 22nd or the 23rd.
Okay, let's do the 30th. Okay?
Okay.
30th would be great.
Okay, how's the morning look for people? 10 o'clock?
That's fine.
10 a.m.?
I actually have something that morning at 9:00 to 11:00, is a 11:00, too late?
I know, how about 11:30, everybody? There's 11:30, 11:30 Memory Clinic. All right, where do you want us to meet you?
To meet right at the driveway to 107 Island.
Is that the first driveway closest?
That's the first driveway. The first driveway closest to Canton Avenue.
Okay.
There's a little stone area that you could park in.
Oh, right, okay.
Then we can walk into the site and the driveway to 111.
All right then, okay, well, thank you. Okay, thank you very much, and thank you, citizen participants, thank you for your contribution too. Thank you, Mr. Henry. Okay. Let's see.
Cheryl wanted to ask me a couple of questions about ADU.
Yeah, there's just been a lot of, I know, I've seen a lot of articles, I'm aware of other communities pursuing ADU zoning, and I know the state's even interested in it. So, and the I know you revised this, Kathleen, from before, and now it has like as a right, if it's within the existing dwelling, and then the special permit process if it's outside. But do you have anything where you kind of compared it to what other communities have done or doing?
Yes, I looked at the 10 Cape Cod towns
Okay.
who passed accessory dwelling units at their last annual town meetings in the spring. 10 of the towns on the Cape.
All right, excellent.
So I looked at the model that had been done for that, and I tweaked it a little bit.
Okay. And Tim and Allison, have, would you have any data on what other communities are doing? Because I think it could be useful for our public discussion, you know, for people in the, sorry, Dani.
I know, please.
For the forest, okay. It would just be helpful if, for everybody, the public and the rest of the board members to have, to put this in the context of larger initiatives that are happening on this, and the kinds of
There's a bazillion things going on with, I mean, practically every town I can think of has gotten on the, has had it on the warrant for the spring or the fall this year. So as I said, Cape Town's all passed it, pretty much, 10 of them. The AARP is doing a thing next or two weeks on adopting ADUs, it's a national effort, not just in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And so there perhaps would be something that some chap or somebody else is going to be doing that talks about how to get citizens buy into it, but I can hear that when I go to that next session, on AARP is doing it in a couple of weeks.
So that was all I wanted to ask, Dani, was just if we could get that broader context.
Yeah, and we had talked about a study, and I know, Kathleen, you had said we could Google it. I first did, and I didn't find it, but was there a study or assessment done on impacts of ADUs that you would refer to last summer?
I did, but it's, you know, at this point, it's a couple of years old, and I think that there's been so many articles that have been in the Boston Globe, in magazines, in all kinds of places. I'll look for the study to see if I can send it to you, but you know, I do have a big commitment coming up tomorrow, so but you know, so this is the, this is a sort of the latest wave of talk is about these ADUs. It's all over the place. So I'll find the study, I'll see if I can find it and send it to you so that you don't have to search for it. But as I said, it's a four-year-old study at this point.
Well, I'm interested, and I'm just interested in it, and all right, well, we barely got to talk about this, but I don't think at past 11 o'clock, I'm not as good at this, so.
Motion to adjourn.
I will accept that if
And I second
All right, a discussion, I just want to make a request that we not quit zoning at the end of the meeting for each meeting coming in the next three meetings. Because it has the potential of dropping off, and annual town meeting is not the best time to do this kind of zoning. There's too much going on for the warrant committee, and there's too much for town meeting to do complex zoning articles. So I really want us to try and keep some focus, and not just have five minutes on it, and then I'm happy to support a motion to adjourn.
Okay, Tim, if you're still, I think you're still there, if you could, let's talk, I think Cheryl's making an important point.
And I just found a study, and I'm Googling it to you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd be more, I'd be interested too, like, because, you know, something's going to just you know, make us go really long, so maybe, maybe at some point, we should just have a third meeting in a month. So there's shorter meetings, because regardless, we don't get, it's not easy to have much focus at 11:30 at night.
Yeah, we're
Yeah, I mean, everything
She's Googling me an article, so.
Well, you said, I told you
No, I was joking, Googling instead of emailing me, that's, that was my, I was trying to make light of how tired we are, because it's past 11 o'clock. But I, but you're, I know, I appreciate your okay.
I knew, I knew exactly what I was looking for, and I knew where to find it, so.
So that was great, I appreciate, you're a better Googler than I am at 11, so have a good night. So we have a motion, and I think Kathleen seconded.
Yes.
All in favor, Cheryl Taggias?
Yes.
Meredith Hall?
Yes.
Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Danny Svensson? Yes. Good night, everyone.
Night, everybody.
Thank you. Bye now.